Good morning. Are we ready? Okay, good morning and welcome to the March 21st, 2023 Board of Supervisors meeting for Lake County. We'll call the meeting to order and we will start with a moment of silence. And we have Director DeLeone.
Good morning. Scott DeLeone, Public Works and Water Resources Director. We would respectfully request the board consider today's moment of silence be dedicated to the memory of Ed Pepper, who passed away unexpectedly last Thursday doing one of the things that he loved most, and that was being on a baseball field with his team. Ed's a longtime Lake County resident. He graduated from Kelseyville High School. He worked at Kelseyville Lumber and as an EMT with Kelseyville Fire Department. He joined Lake County Public Works in 1998 as an extra help, a public works worker, came permanent in April of that year, and was promoted to heavy equipment operator in 2001. In kind of an oddity, he jumped to lead worker from HEO-1 in 2002. So that, I think, is a testament to his work ethic and the impact that he was having on our department. And he was promoted to area foreman in 2008. He would have been celebrating his 25th anniversary working with the department this year. I mentioned baseball. He was the head coach of the varsity baseball team at Clear Lake High School. He loved to cook. He was a constant figure at just about every fundraising event that happened, certainly in the Lakeport and Kelseyville area. He had a fleet of barbecues that he would tow around. And I always told him, you gotta charge for your time, but he never charged for his time. As long as you covered the costs for the meats and the supplies, he donated his time for all of the cooking. He entered a contest, and like I said, he was at virtually every fundraising opportunity, providing great food, and was something he just loved to do. Ed and I were involved with Little League many years ago. He was involved with the FFA and certainly the high school sports. And he's survived by his partner in life, Evy Sabini, and their daughter, Zoe Pepper. So, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Anita, do you want to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any extra items not appearing on the agenda? No? Any from the public? Not seeing any. Okay, so we can move on to approval of the consent agenda. Does anybody have any items they wish to pull? No? Okay. Anyone from the public wish to pull an consent agenda item? Not seeing anyone in the Zoom room. Okay, so I will bring it back to the board for action.
Move we approve the consent agenda as posted?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. It is 9:06. We will go to 6.1, 9:06. Item, public input. Anything from the public? I don't think I have been moved to panelist. Can I get moved to panelist? Thank you. Okay, 9:07. Our 6.2, item, presentation of proclamation commending library technician, Mickey Price, for going above and beyond and serving the public with compassion and professionalism. And did the proclamation make it in there? Come on up. Do you want to read it?
Sorry, yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
If you can just wait about 30 seconds or a minute, we are getting the proclamation.
Sorry, we're getting it printed on the paper, but I can't read it.
So I'm actually going to read this first because I don't want to steal away from what it says in here, and then I'll make my personal comments. Board of Supervisors, County Lake, State of California, proclamation commending library technician Mickey Price for going above and beyond and serving the public with compassion and professionalism. Whereas, Mickey Price was working at Red Bud Library when an elderly medically frail gentleman was dropped off. And whereas, Mickey Price saw that he was not well and became aware that he was unsheltered, so she reached out to the community via social media. And whereas, due to her social media post, Mickey Price was immediately connected with the Board of Supervisors where she asked about service availabilities and shelter capacities in hopes to find somewhere for this gentleman to be sheltered and cared for. And whereas, Mickey Price stated to one of the supervisors, and it does have quotes, but I think it's more of a paraphrase from what was said, "If we don't find him a place today, I don't think he's going to make it." And whereas, because of Mickey Price's immense empathy for the gentleman she hoped to find help for, and because of her persistence in finding a solution for him, he was able to find a place at Project Restoration. And whereas, based on Mickey Price's swift actions to provide assistance to this gentleman, it is quite possible she may have saved his life. And whereas, the gentleman still resides at Project Restoration where he is currently thriving. And whereas, Mickey Price displays the same level of dedication, empathy, and willingness to go above and beyond in her assigned library duties, including community outreach, interlibrary loan requests from the public, and presenting programs for both children and adults. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors commend Mickey Price for taking action and going out of her way outside her scope of work to help a community member and ensure their safety and good health. The Board of Supervisors thanks you for being a leading example in our community for how we should all care for each other, whether we know each other or not. It is an honor to have such a shining example of love and kindness in our county staff. Mickey Price, you are an inspiration to all of us. So I just kind of want to relate the conversation. Both Chair Paeska and myself got involved in the conversation. And we have a lot of situations we walk by every single day. It's easy to see problems, but taking the action and trying to solve the problem, a lot of people, they just keep going about their days and make things happen. We're asking our staff to do a lot of things every single day. That's not one of the things listed of things to do. But after we dealt with the situation and obviously had a positive outcome with this situation, I felt compelled that I can't just walk away, we can't walk away and just allow extra above and beyond actions being taken by our staff without recognition and acknowledgement of that. And in my opinion, especially based on my conversation with Project Restoration, Mickey Price saved somebody's life. Maybe it wasn't that day, maybe it wasn't tomorrow, but he has turned his life around for the better. And we have those opportunities that we can take every day. And to allow that to happen and to not acknowledge it in a public way, or at least acknowledge it directly to Mickey, I think would have been a lost opportunity to say thanks. And I think sometimes we forget to say thanks because we're always moving on to the next task and looking forward on what we need to get accomplished. But I am so thankful for your big heart, your love and kindness. I know you and I spoke on the phone. You were sincerely concerned and worried about this gentleman. And what's strange and coincidental, when we spoke on the phone, I actually stepped away from a continuum of care meeting, which is a meeting where we talk about how we can house homeless people, how we can solve some of the problems we have for the unsheltered. And I came back to that meeting and I had to do, the final part is any comments from the board members. And I said, let me tell you what just happened during our meeting. We just housed somebody. Sometimes we talk about that one. If we can change the life of one person, if we can help one person, Mickey, you helped that one person on that one day, and I know that we're doing that every single day whenever we can. So thank you so much for your efforts. I don't know if you want to say any words, but I wanted to at least acknowledge and say thank you for what you did because you threw a big star for somebody that day and you didn't have to. So, thank you. And Chris, did you want anything to say?
I'll just add, thank you so much, Mickey, for your kindness, your compassion, and your creativity in how you serve library patrons every day and how you do go above and beyond. And we're so fortunate to have you at the library.
Do we have anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? We do have a hand up in the Zoom room. If you could just state your name and unmute, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Ronnie Duncan, and I'm a manager at Restoration House. And I'm with Wendy Passaccio, who is our RN manager at the house. And we just wanted to reach out and say thank you as well. It helps to have community members like you that are compassionate and care about people and see somebody that needs something and take the time to just reach out. Because of that, this individual is doing very well and is a joy to see at the house. So he brings a smile to our face. I don't know if Wendy wants to say anything, but I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. And I know that a big thank you is coming from that individual as well.
Hi, this is Wendy Passaccio, and I just again want to say thank you as well. We are very happy to have him there. It's been great to see how grateful he is. He understands that this is an opportunity that he's been given, and he is taking advantage of that. I do just want to say to you, though, thank you. It's very easy to walk away, to see somebody in need, and maybe, you know, it's easy to turn, it's easy to maybe reach out once, maybe even twice, and then just give up. So the fact that you didn't and you found us is just a blessing, and thank you.
Thank you both so much. Yep. Thank you, Mickey. Seven point. Our next timed item is at 10. Should we move to 7.2? Okay. 7.2, consideration of update, updated advisory board application. And this is from the clerk of the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our deputy clerk, Johanna DeLong, took an initiative to revise this application for your board's consideration. Please forward any of your comments or edits to her directly. And this is her project, and I'm very proud that she took this initiative.
So our advisory board application hasn't been revised since 2014, so I figured it would be a good time to add any questions or anything you guys wanted to add to the application. And specifically, I have a question. If your board would like to keep or remove the felony conviction question, that was the main one that I had. So I would like to hear any suggestions. Thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I've been, I'll use the word bugging, HR to remove that question. I know for employment purposes, there are laws. This is not an employment application. However, I think that in the context of what we aim for, for diversity and equity, that this needs to probably just go away, and we need to make wise decisions, contact the individuals that are on the applications rather than just taking applications at face value. I think we have a due diligence when it comes to approving who is going to be appointed. And I think that that question steers people away from wanting to participate, and I think we should be open, not exclusive.
Supervisor Crandall?
I agree with that. And I also, I know that there's a conflict of interest, like stored of document that's usually on the back of the original. Is that going to stay?
Stay. That's standard. So I'll put it on the back of this.
I also wanted to see if along with that, another attachment could be like a code of conduct, if you will. So that that way, you know, a lot of the advisory committee appointees will know their code of conduct and acknowledge it. And a lot of them will be fine with it. I, you know, I hope.
I'm glad you brought that up. Well, it sets the expectation of what, you know, what serving on a committee looks like for the county. So I think having a code of conduct is appropriate. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I might be the outlier here, but I would, I'd strongly recommend keeping that question in there. Yes, it's not a job application. It's perhaps even some higher. It's a public service appointment in further into the county's goals. Using cannabis licensing as one example, they do ask if there are felony convictions. Those convictions are not an automatic bar to service, depending on the seriousness of the offense. And if we're looking for a metric of disclosures, that would be, hey, just disclose the felony, disclose your felony, and let's talk about it. It's not an automatic bar. And disclosing a felony, that would be an automatic bar, which would be violent felonies, sexual predators, things like that. You don't want to find out after the fact that you've appointed somebody with a serious felony conviction. And so I don't, I don't know for a fact that it's been the major metric in discouraging applications. If it is, you know, I don't know what that says about our volunteer base. But I think it's important. If you're going to serve on a commission, that you be willing to disclose what's coming up, and let us talk about it. It should not be an automatic bar, except in some cases. And I think the cannabis regs point out what those, you know, serious violent felonies, murder, rape, arson. There's a whole laundry list of things that you just would not want to appoint somebody if they had that type of felony conviction. There are plenty of other wobblers that maybe you would want to think about it. But I can't give a free pass without even asking the question.
Okay. Anything from the public? Not seeing any hands up. So I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Sabatier?
So in response to Supervisor Green's comments, two things. One, it still requires vetting. But to me, I feel I live in an area where unfortunately, a lot of people have had to deal with the justice system. The justice system is not always equitable for people who are poor. And so sometimes find themselves in a situation where they do get convicted of a felony. I've also seen people who have absolutely changed their lives and still have a felony in their background. And to have a question to potentially embarrass or shame somebody because it's a public document that comes to us for us to review, that to me, we are to vet to ensure that we're not putting people, as you stated, in there. But I think there's some amazing human beings in our community that do have that type of background and who have turned their lives around. And none of us here had to sign any of that in order to be on this seat as well. And so I would like to offer that same, that same capability to those that we ask to help voice their opinions. It's only in an advisory capacity. No decisions are being made. But again, the vetting process, I think, is what settles that for. We can't just look at what applications we have. We should be contacting these individuals and making sure that they are appropriate.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, I like that as well when it comes to the vetting. And I do think that there are specifics that have to be, I guess there should be concern about what Supervisor Green had talked about. Is there possibly a way we can create a standard list of questions we can ask when we call our, our appointees or whatever the case may be? That way, we're not listing it on the application, but we would have for us something in place to ask a list of questions or something. And I don't mind helping with that. That way, it's just something that we have standardized. I don't know if it's something we can do now or later or look at. But I think that that way, we can ask that question. It's not listed, you know, in the application itself.
I'm just...
Go ahead.
Oh, I was going to recommend that since we have to bring back the code of conduct, we can bring back an example of some questions for the board to consider next week, if you'd like.
Does that work?
Yeah, I'd be supportive of that. I mean, if there was a standard vetting process that we could rely on and included that, that'd be one thing. But I'm just not aware that we have that standard vetting process. So bringing something back, I'd be supportive of that.
Anita?
I do have some examples of codes of conduct that I can, I can share that are used in just these purposes by other jurisdictions. So your board may want to review that type of circumstance. As far as the vetting with questions, the only issue that kind of arises is that someone fills out an application, and then all of a sudden, they're asked, you know, about their criminal history, background as they're being involved in this. What some jurisdictions do is if there are committees, commissions, boards, where a felony conviction may indeed be an issue, and Supervisor Green is right, there are circumstances where it is potentially very much an issue, they simply require background checks in those circumstances. An example would be a coach of a Little League, for example. I realize that's not applicable here, but it's evocative of what you're talking about. So you could do that as well. But so I would just caution as you're developing questions that you, you determine exactly what it is you're trying to ascertain.
Anyone? Supervisor Green?
And to the proposed action, if we were going to give direction to staff to bring something back of a code of conduct, then the requested action today that we removed the question would be appropriate to approve, contingent on bringing back that other process.
We can just bring back the final application when we have all the other components that were asked for. So I think I got direction. Thank you.
Okay.
If, if I may, one more thing. Because obviously, there's two folks here who are saying that there is a possibility for it to still remain in some way, shape, or form, whether it's asking after the fact or whether it's leaving it. What if it was more restricted within the last five years? Within the last, I don't know, like, right now, it's 50 years ago, this is what I did, but yet turned my life around. Like, is this, I just don't see that as an issue for me versus something that was recently done than just looking for a compromise.
I view seriousness as the more important metric than recency, you know? Assault with a deadly weapon, five, 10, 15 years ago, still assault with a deadly weapon. So we can bounce that around when it comes back, I guess.
And so what I mentioned earlier was mainly just to provide another solution or compromise. If we were to go with it, I'm fine with not having the question myself. But I was basically just offering a solution and another option if possible. But if we were to move forward without it, I would be fine with that.
I'm fine to move forward without it.
Me, too.
Okay, so it'll come back next week? All right. Item 7.3, consideration of the following advisory board appointments. Lake County Child Care Council, Cynthia Dominguez. We have two vacancies, one consumer, one community representative, and Cynthia Dominguez would fill the community representative.
Just want to speak highly of Cynthia. She's been involved with childcare for quite a long time. Great person. Love to see her back on the Child Care Council.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Okay, not seeing any. Bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve Cynthia Dominguez through the Lake County Child Care Council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Should we, we have a half an hour until next timed item. Should we do 7.4 now? Or I see we have our director here. Yes, okay. 7.4, consideration of update regarding timeline for mandatory advanced planning projects and staff resource capacity within the Community Development Department. Director Turner, do you want to, you there or here?
Good morning. I feel like standing today, if that's all right. And Johanna's going to pull up a PowerPoint that I want to thank our assistant planner, Mary Claybaum, for whipping together with, for me in like five minutes' notice. I appreciate that. So today's update will end focusing on planning and the capacity, all the many exciting projects that we are doing and planning. But I also wanted to just take a moment, real quick, to just point, to just kind of highlight the other two divisions. In community development, we have code enforcement, we have building and safety, and we have planning. We have a total staff of about 36. That's including me. And just a couple of the highlights will sound a lot like what came out of the governance workshop. But I want you to just, the point of sort of reiterating this data is to help you have a visual of all the things that are going on in the department on any given day. For code enforcement, our cannabis officers removed over 20,000, 25,000 plants. We have taken care of 90,833 pounds of debris. And we have also focused on getting all of our officers certified. We're going to continue with this activity. We have another year of the Roadmap Task Force, and so we'll continue to focus on the, the community of Clear Lake Oaks. We also have two cannabis, two code enforcement officers dedicated to cannabis. And so they're working in tandem, both with our planning, our cannabis subdivision of planning, as well as the sheriff's office, and multiple other agencies as they get involved to help ensure the code is being complied specific to cannabis. Next one, please. Oh, and there are nine of those. We have nine code enforcement people, staff. We have 16 staff members in building. And just a couple stats I wanted to point out is last year, they issued over 1,600 permits and conducted over 4,000 inspections, as well as a strong surge in getting all staff certified, no matter what type of certification it was. The, the building inspectors are working on the different building code certifications. Our techs are working on becoming certified code, or certified CDD technicians for building. So education and staff enrichment and development is happening. So education and staff enrichment and development is happening at all levels within that division as well. Onto planning. All right, you guys know this. This is the table I've been kind of sharing with the whole community. I've been, we've visited a number of town halls, councils, groups. And if the board has a group or a town hall or something where you think that this, that you'd like me to go and talk about, I'd be more than happy to. So in planning, we have 12 staff members, including four for cannabis, full-time and part-time. We have a number of accomplishments that, sorry, planners, I'm actually skipping over that part because I want to get to this part. So as is common with a small staff with limited resources, our advanced planning projects are usually the things that get kind of shoved aside because we're so busy processing use permits, parcel maps, things that actually are turning things around in the community today. So we don't really think about our visioning projects for tomorrow. Unfortunately, a lot of these visioning projects have deadlines and state mandates. And so when you keep shoving stuff, you know, kicking the can down that road, we end up where we are now, which is we can't kick that can anymore because our general plan update is due in 2028. And before we do that, there are eight area plans to update so that our community vision for our small communities and our overall county visions are in sync. We also, in 2008, identified the safety element as a part of that general plan that should be updated as soon as possible. That was in 2008. It hasn't happened yet. So that is at the top of that priority list. Now, all of these groups, all of these projects together are referred to as, in our department, the general plan update and associated document updates. This list is a little bit fluid because we received really great news from HCD that we do not have to do the housing element. And let me tell you, a three-month turnaround on the housing element was totally making me wake up at 3:30 in the morning because it's just, it's, it's hard to fathom getting that done. Each of these elements takes a significant amount of effort. You're gathering all the relevant data for each element. And I don't have them all listed. I have the special ones, like the safety element, because we really need to get that done. It's mandated in law after you update your housing element, you better update your safety element, too. So that one, that's why that one's called out in particular. At the bottom of our list, you'll see we have two other elements. Now, the, that is the Aggregate Resource Management Plan and the agricultural element. The state, HCD gives you the possibility, gives you a number of mandated elements, which are just different chapters in the general plan. So a number of those are required. However, it also allows counties to establish a standalone element for items that are of particular interest in that county. And so that's why we have the agricultural element and the Aggregate Resource Management Plan, because we really care about our ag here, and we really care about what's being pulled out of the ground, both in our creek areas and in our quarries. So each of these plans, this is a very ambitious timeline. I've personally never seen it, this much focus on this much advanced planning and this much required dedication of staff resources. I've heard it's happened. Somebody, some contractor in Sacramento gave me like one other county example where it's happened. So it's still so rare, and so it's such an exciting and scary opportunity that, that my staff is like, starting to get all ramped up because I'm telling them if they survive this project, five years and come out the other end, they're going to have this whopper of a jewel to put on their resumes. So luckily, that seems to excite some of them because they're all about as geeky as me. Anyway, the whole point of going over this is to conclude with the core value of our department, which is one of the core values, which is the board-supported priorities will always be our priority in our department. But as you think about it as a board, as you're talking about future projects, because there's always going to be, you know, new political hot potatoes and new issues that come up that seem very urgent, can be actually very urgent. I would just really appreciate it when you're, when you're thinking about how the new project that you're considering may affect community development, that you just sort of think about it through this filter. We can't move these priorities anymore. It's going to take pretty much all of our staff to be focused and touching them at one point or another. Because even though I'm hoping to attract a planning firm that will be substantive and helpful in helping us get this done, they're not going to be our local experts. My department, our staff, is going to be our local experts. And so that's why, no matter what level, no matter what division, we're going to be depending heavily on our staff to help this project move forward. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. We're really excited about all the projects we work on in planning. It's always fun. Building is crucial to moving forward as our community develops and recovers. And Code Enforcement, of course, is essential to making sure that these communities are places where we all really like to go home to. So, thank you.
Thank you for bringing this presentation to us. These long-term planning projects have been at the top of our priority list for the last several years. So we're really excited to see, to see this initiated. I have a question about the area plans, and I know we've discussed this before, but how will that outreach to the different communities kind of unfold as you're preparing for the 2024 year?
Thank you. I appreciate that question. That is part of why I am letting all the supervisors know. If there's some group that I haven't visited yet, please let me know. And the reason why is because the area plans are the chance for our local communities to have their voice in visioning for what they want. And as you know, all of our area plans are either really old or somewhat old. They all need to be updated. And we, our county has gone through so many changes in our communities due to wildfire, flooding, just general overturn, it could be economy-based, that we, we really need to capture the vision of the community, who we are now and where we want to go. And so in the area plans, that's our opportunity to do that. So we have an idea that we're hoping will help move these along faster than, you know, if we just did them one at a time. So our staff is working on a checklist of the data that is standard in each area plan, the demographics, who are we as a community, how many people do we have now, what are our areas of special preservation, things like that. We're going to distribute this checklist when we get to the area plan line in our table. We're going to distribute this checklist to these different town halls, town councils, the groups where members of our community are already gathering and to talk about the community and where we want to go. That is because a lot of that data that we're going to gather is, it's objective. It's not, it's not visioning part, it's the data gathering part. So then, we're going to start with the oldest, Lower Lake, and eventually move our way down according to dates of adoption, and start working with each group individually. And that's when we're going to expand it. It won't be limited to town halls by that point. What I'd really like to see is a booth, a planning booth that becomes just sort of like a regular at the town fairs, or at the Lake County Fair, or at, at places where all members of our community are gathering that may not necessarily go to a one-time night meeting. You know, this is where we really need to work on community vision driving the project and not just sort of, I don't, the last thing I want to do is have like, one community meeting be like, yeah, we got all that public input. You know, we really need to work harder to get ideas from all parts of the community. And so that's going to be the second step. So the first step is the checklist. The second step is the visioning.
What's the timeline on that checklist? Like, when do you want the town halls to start working?
It's in process right now.
Okay.
I don't have a timeline when we can get it out yet because we have been focused on the RFP. And we were trying to get started doing the housing element since we wouldn't have enough time, because RFPs take a time, you know, the whole selection process. So, and so now we're shifting over to general plan, area plan checklist.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know who was first over here. Supervisor Crandall?
Okay. Yes, I think that's, it's ideal, of course, for the town halls. I know it's listed in the law that created them in the 70s. So it's a real, it's a real ideal thing to do. Gene Polino, when he was the Chair of WORTH, held, I think, three meetings to try and collaborate all of the town halls together to address this because his feeling, and a lot of the feeling of the community was that if they could just work on it, if they would work on it on their own, prior to coming to a meeting, like, you're coming, you're going to be coming and presenting, they can have a feel as to what they're doing and be kind of ahead of the game. And so I hope that maybe that could be something as well. So once I know the timeline that you have, we could relay it to the town chairs and groups.
That's wonderful, particularly in jurisdictions that have multiple town councils and town halls. Yeah, for them to be coordinating so there's a unified voice for the community would be really good.
Right. Because I know Upper Lake resents, represents, resents, represents Nice and Upper Lake. So the WORTH Town Hall does that. And then Shoreline covers Lucerne down to Clear Lake Oaks, I think. So there would have to be something of that nature going on. But yeah, no, thank you for bringing this.
Well, we're looking forward to working with every one of them.
The reason I was asking about town, our timelines, is that Kelseyville doesn't have a town hall. And so we need to put together an advisory group for that to start working on that. So is that something that you want to accomplish this year? Or is that something?
I think we're looking at that next year.
Okay.
We're trying to get, get a firm on board right now and get started on that safety element because part of that safety element is the climate vulnerability analysis, which will also inform a number of other important county documents. And so that's what we're focusing on for this year. But as soon as we can start integrating that, we're going to, the next step with our area plans, then we're going to get right on it.
Okay, clear. Supervisor Spatier?
I appreciate the efforts made to try to do what we've been asking for, for quite a while, which is to update these area plans. I think we talked about it in 2019 when we first got here. It's important to update. The plans are, one of them's 1985, I believe.
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight. A few things have changed since then. The internet didn't even exist. So I think it's nice to get a clean slate. I think the timing with our Economic Development and Housing Division is also impeccable because I think the missing piece, which is not going to come from you, in my opinion, it's going to come from the other division, is how are we marketing ourselves to fill in the gaps that we have? Your job is to process those applications in the appropriate ways and make sure they meet the foundation that we created, but we have to figure out how to fill it in and not just wait organically for people to show up. I know both cities have retail attraction contractors that are going around trying to fill in vacant commercial buildings. We have PDCs that are just sitting there and waiting again for somebody to do something. And I think that by cleaning everything up, making sure it's all up to date, and having our new division, I think all of that put together is going to be absolutely perfect timing. My last thing is just the acknowledgement. I have seen the books that your building officials have to go through. This is not a simple Cliff Notes-type of book to go through and then pass a test. These are, they look like they're close to 1,000 pages, and it's multiple books to go through, which kind of, it's insane how many codes there are to follow, but it's all about safety and making sure that what we're building is going to still be there decades from now. So appreciate their hard work in order to try to get certified for everything we need so we can go ahead and serve the public to our best abilities. So thank you very much for this presentation.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Supervisor Green?
Thank you. I'm excited, too, in a nerd kind of way, but five years of work. Temporar enthusiasm. Two questions. So one, super excited to see Aggregate Resource Management on there, a little bit later down the road, but excited to see it there. But having it moved that far back, because the plan is kind of an overarching thing, it wouldn't, putting it that far out would not preclude us from considering site-specific remediation projects that might come to our attention, even as we're taking five years down the road to take a look at the more global vision for aggregate extraction.
Well, remediation is part of the existing plan right now. So, so, yeah, nope, no problem.
Okay. And then on the safety plan update, it's unclear. I'm looking at our circulation element right now. So the safety plan and evacuation routes kind of go hand in hand. But I was wondering, is the safety plan update kind of require the circulation element to kind of come along with it to get updated or not? Because I'm not seeing a lot about safety or evacuation routes in our current circulation element.
Well, your comment brings up a really good point. There are additional implementation programs from other plans that are not on my five-year timeline but are actually kind of hovering there in the wings. The Local Hazard Mitigation Plan names community development as responsible for a resiliency plan, a climate action plan, emergency evacuation routes. I can't remember what else. And so even though I may not sound all excited and supportive when I'm talking to our Chief Climate Resiliency Officer about bringing all that on, it's important. And I am very thankful for the support of other departments to help us get that done. So, so that, that circulation is actually its own plan. And I, I don't want to say I don't think I can get away from doing it right now. It's something that we're going to have to weave into the plan, into our five-year timeline, yes. Because it's, it's, these plans and implementation programs are essential for accomplishing those goals so that when we update these plans, they still serve as valuable tools for all of our departments and agencies to be able to secure funding because we're working on capturing those. So we have to hold up our end.
Yes. So just to paraphrase, looking ahead, evacuation planning could land in multiple plans. Safety element, circulation element someday, and then our resilience, resiliency plan when that, when that gels.
Possibly, yeah. Yeah, it actually, I can think of maybe four elements right now that it'll inform. Public infrastructure, our resources, our safety, our transportation, a number of different elements, as well as be important data for our area plans, too. And I'm not sure which one feeds which, you know, because with our local experts, our members of the public, they're going to have, they're going to have input on that as well. But just as our department always stands ready to assist other departments in projects that they've going on, we're going to rely a lot on the expertise of other departments as well, like roads or emergency services, things like that, to help us inform our evacuation plans, Sheriff's Office, the people who, you know, evacuate people, not us. So it's going to be a team effort.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight evacuation planning and how it might land in these various plans.
Yes.
And I'll just add that they're area-specific, too. So, you know, we've got the evacuation grant right now with the Riviera's, and so the Conocde Fire Safe Council is taking the lead on that. Claberry Council's worked on evacuation plans, so is South Lake Fire. So it can be really specific to the area. So if it's something you're concerned about, you can work with your advisory council on it right now. And then that's work that's prepared for her.
That's awesome. So, which I just want to close with, I'm going to be dependent on you guys, too, because you have a lot of local expertise and knowledge that, that will help our department move faster because we know how to reach out and get that data that we need to keep going. So, thank you.
Supervisor Spatier?
I just want to make one comment. I feel I need to explain why we've been asking since 2019 and it hasn't happened. We just haven't had stability in that department to be able to make that happen. And, and I feel better than I ever have with how the department is being led today. So I appreciate you making the presentation because I really do believe that this is going to happen. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any input from the public? We do have a couple hands up. First, we have Betsy Khan. If you can unmute and state your name, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Betsy Khan, Essential Public Information Center. And of course, this is a very welcome subject to me. And Maria, I know understands why I'm excited about this along with you guys. But I have a couple of questions. One of them is, in the Lucerne, what they call the Shoreline Area Plan, the city of Clear Lake is included in the area plan, which to me is completely illogical because it's a city and it has its own area plan. So I wonder if that will be pulled apart. Secondly, I don't, I don't have the information at my, at hand right now, but I believe that the recent changes at the Office of Planning and Research called for updating the land use element along with the safety element and the housing element, because there's, they're linked together. And I didn't hear mention of that. I, I might have missed it. And my And my concern there is that I think it's, it seems to me evident that we need a, a programmatic EIR, something at that level, to address the multitude of land use issues that we're facing now in the development of cannabis, commercial cannabis operations and perhaps changing some of the agricultural rules as well that we're learning about in regard to water and that sort of thing. So those are my two, two areas of concern. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And then we have phone 6205. If you want to unmute and state your name.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much. This is Bart Levinson. Thank you Supervisor Pyska for mentioning the people who are not in town hall areas. I'm in one of those. And I'm very concerned about our community members without a council having a way to participate in this. So, number one. Number two, I'm concerned about, this is incredibly daunting task and I applaud the county, I applaud the CDD for taking on such a mammoth task. It becomes confusing. For instance, much of what the Cannabis Task Force is dealing with affects people living in residential areas and what they will live next to. And I'd like to see more outreach to the town halls in general in terms of cannabis ordinance policy. And with the I too, we all need to establish what is best for living in Lake County, for our businesses, for industries, and for residents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any last comments from the board? Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Want to take a five-minute break? Okay. We will take a six-minute break, come back at 10 o'clock, and go to our 6.3 timed item. All right, welcome back. We're going to start with our 6.3 item, 10 a.m. presentation by Jose Valera regarding the provision of public defender services and the structuring and organization of a public defender services program. County Council?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the memorandum to your board indicates, Mr. Varela is going to be speaking today regarding structuring and organization of a public defender services program, public defender services in general. Mr. Varela has considerable experience as a public defender. His experience level and expertise is well evidenced by his resume, which is attached here. Deputy Torres from my office is also here and in front of you today. Mr. Varela is a participant in this meeting, so he can begin his presentation at any time. Good morning, Mr. Varela.
Good morning, Anita. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, sir.
Thank you. And I will begin. Thank you very much, members of the board and President of the Board. I appreciate the ability to be able to speak to you about an incredibly important project and an incredibly important initiative that you're taking on. It bears noting that 60 years ago, the Gideon versus Wainwright decision came down, which basically gave the right to counsel to many, many who had not been able to receive that, that kind of representation. But over the years, it's taken public defender offices and attorneys a massive amount of work to be able to reach the competencies that ensure appropriate representation. In my 30-some-odd years of, going on 35 years of practice, I have practiced in large offices in Los Angeles and San Diego County. I've also practiced in small jurisdictions. And I've also been the public defender, the assistant and the public defender of Marin County. And I spent 20 years there in Marin County. I was honored and somewhat surprised to get a call from Mr. Torres with regard to the initiatives that were going on in Lake County in light of the Sixth Amendment Report and other things. And I applaud the council for wanting to be informed as to, you know, how do you create a statutory public defender office that will provide the kind of services that are now prominent in the best of offices in, in and around California? I think Lake County also is very important because of the kind of county that it's, where you are situated in the state, the demographics of your, of your county, and the, the impetus for change, which I think is, is essential. In, in looking at my introduction, the one thing I want to make sure you understand is, I was actually trained as an employment lawyer. I went to law school and thought I was going to be an employment lawyer. And, and once I got into a courtroom and fell in love with public defender work, I thought that that career was gone. But one of the things I've realized as a manager in a public defender office and of the creation of a public defender, is that a public defender's office is a well-structured legal business if run appropriately. And what that means is ensuring that the competencies necessary to deliver the services are appropriately put in place and that supervision ensures that those competencies are up to snuff throughout the, the time that the office is, is providing those services. The Sixth Amendment Report, while it speaks to the specifics of, of Lake County, really is also echoing the findings of the California State Bar Committee of 2006 that basically said that indigent criminal defense services had to be provided in a certain way. And if you read that report, and I've given a link to that report to, to Anita by email, one of the things that you see is the intense focus on supervision and competency assessment over and over again. I can tell you that that was not the case in many places that I had gone to. When I got to Marin County, there were people that hadn't been evaluated in 25 years. And that was, you know, unheard of to me, coming from San Diego where evaluations happened every year. And one of the things that happens in evaluations is that supervisors not only get to see the accomplishments of an attorney over a year period, but also assess their, their competencies and their training and their keeping up on their craft to ensure that clients are represented in the best possible way. I come from a form of representation that basically is collaboration. And I think the Sixth Amendment Report really talks about collaboration. It is not only collaboration among the attorneys and the supervisors and the, the staff that will, you know, be the foundation of an office, but it also speaks to the, the necessity of, of, of the following up and putting into place the, the structure of a sound business. And as a result, in Marin County, I created a monthly evaluation program. Every March, we, we evaluated people. And I was one of the departments of, I headed one of the departments that had 100% evaluations done every year. It is not easy to supervise attorneys, you know. And, and at the same time, what we came to find out as we evaluated was that we were able to highlight the accomplishments of attorneys. And the goal of evaluation and oversight is not to, you know, look at somebody and, and chastise them, but rather to improve and make certain that client-centered representation is really a reality for the people of, of not only Lake County, but all California counties that have public defender offices. Starting a statutory public defender offices has recently been done. And often at the, you know, through the impetus of the Sixth Amendment Foundation reports, recently in Santa Cruz County, they created a public defender office. As a Marin County public defender, I was a consultant, you know, mutual benefit consultant with that county. And I spoke to their HR department for over a year as they were going through the process of creating it. I sat on the board that, or the panel that chose the public defender for Santa Cruz County. So these things are happening and are important to the, to the movement of not only the Sixth Amendment project is seeking, but that communities are asking for and, in, in demanding in, in a lot of ways. So what does a statutory public defender office look like in the present day? It does not look like what many in the past have seen. Clients get appointed a public defender, public defender just follows the case through. It's much more than that. And a lot of that comes from the revolution that was created by the PRONX defenders through the process of holistic representation. Public defenders now are community-oriented organizations. They literally serve the community if they are done well. And that means working with community members, going out, doing outreach, creating things like expungement clinics, helping people clear their records, getting people reassessed, not only creating the legal defense necessary to take triable cases to trial or through the, the plea stage, but also creating an opportunity for reentry into a community with their record cleaned and their ability to sit on advisory panels, to sit and take on work that, that might not have been available to them before. And with the issues involving the CARE Act and other mental health homeless issues that are going around the state, a lot of what public defender offices are doing has expanded tremendously, tremendously to be able to do that. That's why a collaboration model is essential. A collaboration model in a modern public defender office means public defenders are working with everybody in the pipeline. That is to say probation, district attorney, sheriff's office, community-based organizations, in order to find the solutions that, that work out. In Marin County, the sheriff created a reentry pod in the jail to be able to start getting people coordinated to get services upon their release. The public defender took former, a former client. And as, as their cases were cleaned up and, and as, as things were bettering in their life, as was noted by one, by one of your supervisors, he came on as a case manager, helping us direct people into treatment, following people while they were in treatment. He was a peer, knowing what they were going through and to ensure those kinds of, of outcomes. I sent to Anita a link to a news program that was done by ABC News in San Francisco about a program that was a collaboration between the public defender's office, the, the probation department, the district attorney, and the sheriff, all involved in a project called the Phoenix Project. And the results of that were really to reduce, in the public housing area, primarily African-American clients, reduce their footprint in terms of probation. We literally reduced the number of adults that were on probation. We helped through the Phoenix Project get people's licenses back, get people employed. We worked with, you'll see interviews of some of the, of the, of the individuals that, that were involved in that. That's what public defender offices look like now. They're holistic. They are wraparound community resourcing. We see the public defender system as a, simply an entryway to allow people to get to the place that they can better their lives and be productive members of the, the community. So public defending has taken on a lot. And the, the process of putting these offices together is, is daunting. You do need to have a lot of, a lot of coordination with regard to that. So as you look at what it is that you wish to do in the future, this is simply an introduction, you know, this is simply a, a, an introduction to me as a consultant who will assist you as much as possible or possibly take on other roles that you may see essential to be able to assist you. But my, my goal in being involved in this project is one of dedication. I dedicate myself to clients and to people in need, to what it means to be an indigent criminal defense attorney, and what it means to make our communities better. Just to give you just an example of some of the things that, that I did in Marin County and, and just to let you know how a community can work. I created an internship program in Marin County that had high school students, college students, post-college gap year students, volunteer attorneys, and even emeritus attorneys who had retired and wanted to come back and serve their community in a certain way. My high school students went on to get accepted into major colleges around the country. My college students got accepted into the major law schools in the country, including Harvard, Yale, Georgetown, you name it, Berkeley. I have mentored students from sophomore in high school to, one of my mentees is now a third-year law student at Berkeley. And I've mentored her through her college education and through that process because we use the public defender's office as a civics learning laboratory. Those are the kinds of things that people are hungry for, your community's hungry for. And the way the, the state laws are changing with regard to diversion, regard to people who can be on juries, what we need is a community-based response to criminal justice. In doing my due diligence work on your county, I read a lot about, you know, health factors and criminal justice factors. And the thing that I was most, you know, piqued by was the comments made by the sheriff a few years ago and the chief of police of Lakeport, I believe, or Clear Lake, indicating that much of the arrest issues in Lake County is because there is no coordination of services available to people who are oftentimes just having mental health or substance abuse episodes. And I think they're absolutely right. The coordination that needs to be had between all of us to create the kind of solutions that are sustainable, not just, you know, in and out, but sustainable solutions that create pipelines not to prison, but to productive citizenship in a county. I think those are the things that a public defender now can do. And so I, I'm here before you just to kind of let you know the, the kinds of things that I would be looking at in trying to assist your county to create a statutory public defender office that all of you can be quite proud of and that your community can take immense pride in. So it's a short introduction to me. I'm open to questions and anything else that you would like to ask me about.
Thank you. Is there anything else that you want to add?
I do not, Madam Chair. Deputy Torres may have something he'd like to add.
Normally I would, but I actually, I actually don't. I think Mr. Varela was quite eloquent in, in the things he, he stated he wants to see done, that he would prefer to see done, the things that we, we would benefit from as a county. I think there's more conversations to be had with this body as well as with Mr. Varela. But I think I'm more curious about the, the questions that may come from this body, the board, or the public at large, especially some of our, our current PDs. This is going to be a long, involved process. And I think the sooner we all start working at it together, the better it's going to be overall.
Okay, thank you, Carlos. Supervisor Spatier.
Very nice to meet, very nice to meet you. Thank you for this introductory presentation. Your resume definitely speaks for itself. One of the things that I want to highlight that you mentioned is your work with Santa Cruz. I think they kind of went through the similar process we did. I know in having our Sixth Amendment Report, I was looking up what else they've done. And they did one similar for Santa Cruz County. And it seems to be the outcome is some of the work that you've done with Santa Cruz County as well to create the statutory public defender's office there. So I appreciate that level of experience because it might be something very similar that can be brought over here. And while I don't disagree with some of the comments that you've made as far as what would the dream public defender's office look like, I, my belief would be that there's phases to ensure that certain things are accomplished before we start tackling some of the more difficult things. But I look forward to the process. I know to me, it's very important that we make sure to tighten up and fill in the gaps wherever there are. It's, it's something that we need to ensure that people's rights are taken care of and not accidentally dropped. And I think some of that is difficulties itself. I mean, we, we have mandates that we have from the state as well that staff I mean, we have mandates that we have from the state as well that staff capacity and vacancies always make things difficult, but we have to figure out how to ensure that we can do the best that we can and do better than what we're doing right now.
Supervisor Green.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the introduction and the overview. I love just about every bullet point in there, but I want to highlight where we want to head and probably where we're at now. So one phrase that struck out was the statutory public defender office, which sounds like a statutory creature. I infer that we are something short of that model in our current incarnation with indigent counsel. So, and I think if I'm going down the rabbit hole correctly, one big reason for that is realignment. The state basically about 10, 15 years ago started divesting. It couldn't figure out how to do things properly, so it divested to the counties in some hope that we would, in 58 different ways, somehow come to some common understanding of how to provide proper indigent defense. And in a small rural county with limited resources, it seems we have landed something well short of a statutory public defender office that has all the bells and whistles that you talked about so eloquently. So as we move forward toward something closer to a statutory public defender office, are there things we can do right here in the here and now to address some of the core concerns that were raised in that Sixth Amendment report and to ensure that, given all the limitations of our current system, we can go to our community today and say, you know, we are taking adequate steps to provide a good indigent defense and protect the rights of our criminally accused?
The first thing you can do is do a resolution, a resolution voicing your commitment to the kind of office that you wish to see created. A resolution starts us all off, right? And because, you know, as we go through the process, the outcome is unknown unless you actually in a resolution seek to put out the values of your county, the focus of what it is that you want to do, so that as you start the process, you have a resolution on which you can say, this is why we're doing this, this is why we're doing that. One of the things that a resolution does is it gives your board's guidance as to what it is that you're trying to achieve, what values you're trying to bring to your community. And it also allows not only a consultant but an appointed public defender to have a foothold in a legal setting. The resolution gives guidance to this. From the resolution will come initiatives that will be, you know, funded by the county or resolutions that seek to get state assistance in carrying out the values of that resolution. But to me, I think the first step is to create a resolution that makes clear what it is that you hope to achieve by this process you're going to go through. You know, if what you want to do is create a statutory public defender's office, then the government code is very clear as to guidelines. Public defender offices have been in California since about 1920, 1921. Clara Foltz was the first woman admitted to the state bar, and she was the impetus and the creator of public defender systems in California. The Los Angeles County Public Criminal Courts Building is named after Clara Foltz. She's an incredible historic figure in progressive politics of the 1920s in California. And she had the foresight to kind of see what it is that could happen to defendants if they were not properly represented. So looking at the government code section, starting that process of dedicating the creation of a public defender offices, and I think, you know, using your lobbyists or your state representatives to help you get the funding to be able to create a sustainable public defender office and creating the HR structure, things of that nature. But to start out, a resolution is essential to be able to build off of.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, I'll open it up for the public.
Good morning. I'm Andrea Sullivan. I am a co-administrator and the original founder of Lake Indigent Defense. I wanted to introduce myself to Mr. Varela and I hope and expect that my business partner and co-administrator will hopefully be able to at least have some sort of meeting shortly. One of the things I want to highlight is that LID is responsible and oversees the indigent defense for about 98% of the criminal defendants in Lake County. A statutory office, and I agree wholeheartedly with everything that Mr. Varela said, but I also want everyone to understand that that's one level of conflict. There's going to be a great need to address the rest of the people that can't be represented by a statutory office, and we need to keep that in mind going forward. So I'm looking forward to speaking with Mr. Varela and trying to envision that because I don't want all of the focus to be on the office that the indigent defense community has wanted for so long in Lake County. But I work in several different counties, and I'm acutely aware that a public defender can't reach everybody, and there needs to be a plan involved to have at least three levels, possibly four levels of conflict counsel. Because if, for instance, if there's two people charged in the same criminal proceeding, public defender can only represent one. It creates an entire bar of representation for anybody that is associated. If there is a prior representation by any one of the defendants, I mean, attorneys at a public defender, the whole public defender's office is conflicted out. So I hope we don't lose track of that in going forward. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that Mr. Varela has. Thank you.
If I may respond, I'd like to thank Ms. Sullivan, first of all, for a quick, wonderful introduction email that she sent me, and I do look forward to working with her, and she's absolutely right about what she speaks. A public defender cannot represent everybody. That a vibrant private conflict panel, as it's envisioned, is absolutely necessary to it. In Marin County, I worked very closely with the Alternate Defenders, Inc. It was an organization that was created to handle conflicts, and we worked very well together. We did mutual trainings together. We kept in touch. I met with them regularly on their advisory panel. They had a public defender, they had private attorneys, you know, that oversaw that, and they also were quite cognizant of when somebody was not delivering the kind of services that were necessary and took action to remove people from panels, did actions that were consistent with ensuring competencies. It was rare because, working together, there was a community that built, that really was built on wanting to present and represent people in the best possible way, both at the statutory public defender's office and at the alternate defender office. And so I look forward to working with the people with LID and seeing what it is that it looks like. They, you know, I know how hard they've been working. I know how hard it is to recruit people to come out to Lake County, you know, and they've done a really difficult job as well. I mean, I think that they are, you know, somebody that, an organization that has to be part and parcel of any transition that's going to go on. And I applaud Ms. Sullivan for her work, and I look forward to working with them closely.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Tom Feimer. I am, as Ms. Sullivan said, co-administrator and her partner in Lake Indigent Defense. Again, thank you. It's good to hear, and we did also have a brief email introduction with Mr. Varela. Good to hear from him today. Look forward to seeing him here in Lake County soon and hopefully too, not just in front of the board, but, you know, in the court, sort of seeing, you know, how things run and some of our attorneys at work. That would be exciting to see. It's also exciting to hear about some of the things Mr. Varela has talked about, community outreach, collaborative justice programs, things of that nature. My concern or my caveat, because I, when I was a training attorney, I worked in the San Francisco Public Defender's Office, a fantastic, well-funded program, did many of those things. But one of the primary lessons there is collaboration's a two-way street. To get results, it takes resources. It takes commitments, not just from the organization that's tasked with doing those, but also the people doing the tasking. Otherwise, what you have are unfunded mandates, which generally result in more things like the 6AC report that we saw. Historically, here in Lake County, we have done a lot with limited resources. That is nothing to be necessarily ashamed of, but going forward, if we are expected to do more, especially if our attorneys are expected to do more and they work very, very hard, that's the main thing I hear all the time, is how much, how hard everybody's working, I think we're going to need the institutional and the political commitment to provide the resources to do those things. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate Tom's comments. I think that they are right on point. The reality is that we are, that Lake County is going to have to take a really solid look at itself in terms of the delivery of indigent criminal services. And as the Sixth Amendment Report points out, the state is going to have to also look at itself. This is not just a county situation. The Sixth Amendment has rightfully called out the state, and I think that the state would be well, sort of, supported in wanting to ensure funding to Lake County because otherwise they're going to be dealing with an ACLU lawsuit, they're going to be dealing with the Fresno situation all over again. And the goal is to create the kind of funding that's going to sustain the kind of services that are now part and parcel of the kinds of plans that the governor is looking to put into place, whether it's mental health services, substance abuse services, civil courts that have to be mandated. There's a lot of work that's been put on public defender offices that a lot of times people don't even know about. For example, a public defender is supposed to monitor things at the School Attendance Review Board to ensure that in juvenile cases, that an issue that is involved with truancy and other things don't graduate into referrals to the juvenile system. There's just a lot of stuff that is going on. But one of the things I hope does come out of our initial work is data. Much of what gets done in public defender offices is really through data. How many cases are there? At what stage of proceedings are they? And how is it that we gather this data? And how is it that it's reported out to ensure, you know, the kind of results that we want to see? So to me, I hope that as we, as LID and the creation of statutory public defender office created, that we find out what does the universe look like. And this is going to be involved conversations with the Superior Court, and I look forward to being able to meet with the presiding judge of the Lake County Superior Court and discuss, you know, some of the concerns that they may have, and more than that, look at the data that exists in terms of creating caseloads that will allow the kind of work that is essential to properly representing people in this day and age.
Okay. Do you want to?
I just wanted to add briefly, thank you to the board. I was informed today that our extension was signed for the next 90 days, but that's not a long time. Mr. Feimer and myself, we carry a huge chunk of the caseload personally in Lake County, so we have to oversee, at least in part, this transition while actively maintaining some of the most serious cases the county has. So I really hope, working with staff and working with the board, that we can not end up where we are 90 days from today and have some more concrete answers. There's positions to be filled. We are already interviewing with new attorneys, and we don't want to see attrition because there's no real definite answers. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Rob Brown, former member of the Lake County Board of Supervisors for 20 years, and I mentioned that timeline only because, well, I'll mention another timeline. For 33 years, as a licensed bail agent in Lake County, I've worked very closely with the public defender's office and the entire judicial system, very closely, not just peripherally and share some clients with them, but intimate involvement with the attorneys and the program itself. And I've seen what works and what doesn't necessarily work. And when I was on the Board of Supervisors, I was fortunate enough to carry that relationship as a bail agent onto the board through the Public Defender's Oversight Committee that we formed as a result of a grand jury report that came out many years ago. I too, I've read the Sixth Amendment Report, and there's some validity to what they see as an independent body, but there were some flaws in that as well. And I'm not going to go into those right now. I don't think that's the purpose for this. I think it's, this is kind of another introductory meeting to the, how to resolve the public defender issues as they're seen. And I'm going to be quite blunt here, as I sometimes am, but I'm not going to be disrespectful because I know you guys have many things to do, and I know that COVID was a big part of why everything just came to a screech and halt as far as meetings and oversight and all that. But it's incumbent upon you. He mentioned this earlier about the political investment, but it's also, you've got to educate yourself on this. You can't do it here. I'm telling you right now. The education doesn't come here. Comes up on the fourth floor. You got to go up there, and you got to spend time. You got to learn what their job is, first of all. The one disagreement that I have with the gentleman, Mr. Varela, is that right?
Yes.
What is it?
Varela.
Varela. Got it. Thank you. Public defenders, it's a constitutional responsibility to provide legal counsel to indigent. It's not a constitutional responsibility to provide a social worker. So we got to be really careful about turning our attorneys into social workers. I realize they have a commitment to our community, and they already do that. Lake County is not Marin County. It's not Santa Cruz. The attorneys here, the defendants here, the judges here, all of them, they know each other. They see each other on the street. They know their kids' names, probably know their kids' birthdays. They don't have that in other areas. So we have a relationship here, and I think that that's actually beneficial to us because when we had the Public Defender Oversight Committee, did you need to get that? Is that my time?
It's your time.
Okay. Well, anybody want to yield their time to me? I'm going to ask for a little more time. Are you going to give it to me?
Okay.
Okay.
I'm going to reset.
I think this time thing is an irresponsible way to handle something as, this has been going on for years, and it's going to continue to go on for years. And I think that to begin with, you're not going to solve all the problems. Statutory office is probably what needs to be done, but you can resolve much of this right now. You can schedule a Public Defender Oversight Committee meeting. You guys, the two of you are on that committee right now, but you've never met. So you need to reform that committee, have that meeting next month, and start where, pick up where you left off. Go to the judge, go to the presiding judge, and ask the judge, you know, what can you do? Krista's on that. Somebody from the county council's office, two members of the public, two board members. You'd be surprised how much you'll get done in that little room when you go, oh, this is what's going on. Okay. She described the conflict. There are a lot of times where you actually have more defendants than you have attorneys in some of these cases, in these cultivation cases, things like that. You'll actually have that. So conflict is quite often that you have So conflict is quite, quite often that you have that instance. So those need to be dealt with. All these things have to be dealt with. But I think if you form that, not form it, just reactivate it, get that Public Defender Oversight Committee meeting, and start tearing into some of these things, it's not, that part of it is not complicated. The resolution to all this is complicated, and it's very expensive, too. We don't have Marin's budget either. You don't have Santa Cruz's budget. You have a lot less than that, and you have other things that you have to focus on as well. But Tuesdays are a little bit tough to spend time at the court, and that's when a lot of the, a lot of the good stuff happens, that you can watch the public defenders. But there are other days. I suggest that you guys spend a little time up there. Actually, I suggest you spend a lot of time. This is a huge investment for the county, so I think you need to spend a lot of time up there, as much as you can, or at least have a couple of your board members go up there and come back and report. The Public Defender's Oversight Committee came back and reported every year. Cameron Reeves, after he had retired, he was part of that committee, he came back and reported on our behalf every year. And those, those meetings and those reports were very valuable, as far as informing the board, who didn't have the time to go up there and spend, as to what was going on in that, in that arena. So I would suggest that you do that, but I think you can get this thing kicked off by getting that Public Defender Oversight Committee meeting, get those things reactivated sooner than later. You could, it doesn't take that long. It's a simple agenda. You don't vote on things that you, that require a budget or anything. It's just informative. And you can start sharing information, you can bring it back to the board, but I think that's a very valuable tool that you add available to you. And that's, that's all I have right now.
Okay.
I can't guarantee that I won't come back.
Thanks. Anyone else in the chamber?
I did want to.
Oh, sorry, guests, if you would like to respond.
Yeah. I did want to respond to one thing, and that is, Lake County is doing something that's unique and important, and that is that it was recommended by the Sixth Amendment report that a commission be created. But as was noted by the speaker, you guys already have that structure in place. And in fact, that is a structure that you're going to continue in order to be able to, you know, ensure community participation and things of that nature. I think that that's going to be important, because whoever, however this office is going to be created, the relationship between the office and this oversight committee is going to be really essential and important. And the question of, who is the commission going to be the oversight of? Is it going to be the oversight of the statutory public defender? Do they have the same right to be oversight of a conflict panel situation? Those are legal issues that really have to be addressed as to governance. How is this going to be a working relationship between the committee, the community panel that is going to be creating, in some instances, policy and oversight? And what does that reporting look like from a statutory public defender offices? So I think that the comment that was made is really very, very important. And if the, if the board seeks to lead the structure or the creation of an office through the primary focus being this public defender community panel, then I think that that needs to be real clear in the resolution and in the way governance is going to be created. I will tell you that there are issues of confidentiality, there are issues of conflict of interest, there's a lot of issues that have to be ironed out in a code of conduct, as was noted before in other, in other presentations today, to ensure the independence of the public defender, and at the same time, ensure the independence of the conflict attorneys that will be taking on cases that are not able to be handled by the public defender. And I'm not sure that the same panel can, can create oversight as to both. And so those are issues of governance that have to be addressed.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Hi. My name is Thomas Quinn. I'm a public defender. I've been working here since June 2003. I've been, been through it all and seen it all. The 6AC report, it was well-intentioned, but there were just some real wild misrepresentations and exaggerations. And even though I have some criticisms of how things have operated here, the implication that we're a bunch of bumbling incompetents, I, you know, I kind of resented, and it's just, just not true. And as one of my colleagues said last time, we have some of the highest rates of acquittals and dismissals of any county in California. I think having a public defender office is a good idea in terms of conflicts, however. And there are other counties that are smaller than our county. They have public defender offices, Lassen County, Siskiyou County, they have them. But you would need to cover the first, the first level of conflict would be covered by a companion office called the alternate public defender. So they, most counties have that. Mendocino County has it. So I think setting up a public defender system on that basis would cover most of the cases. There would be some, some conflict attorneys, but I don't think that would be a high percentage of cases. So I think LID has been doing a great job. I think our attorneys are highly competent and honorable. And, you know, I think continuing, maybe having a LID 2.0 or something would be a good, a good perspective for the intermediate term, because I don't, I don't really see that, you know, there's a political will here. I think there are the resources, but, you know. So I note that a former district attorney who I knew, and we all knew, was awarded $800,000 on a lawsuit that was entirely frivolous. So I'm just not sure where the county's money is going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Quinn, I think presents some really good points. One is, as you're looking at this criminal justice stream, you realize how many parts there are to it, right? And how you have to navigate each one of them successfully. And one of them is, are you thinking about creating an alternate public defender, which a lot of counties have done? But other counties have basically kept a private panel. So those are the kinds of decisions that really have to be addressed, and maybe it's the kind of decisions that you do bring in a public defender community panel to assess and say, what is the best, right? I will tell you that the speaker who said, you need to have a lot of knowledge in order to make some of these decisions, he's absolutely right. It takes a lot of knowledge to try to figure out how it is that you're doing it. El Dorado County just recently created an alternate public defender office, right? And, and they basically said, you know, this is the better way for us to ensure, you know, not only representation, but continuity in representation, to be able to do that. In some counties, the public defender handles the budgets of both offices, but an independent leader is the head of an alternate public defender office. And, and there's, there's very, very different structures. I do agree that there, that LID has an essential part in the creation of the future, of what this really looks like for the county. I do want to acknowledge something that Mr. Quinn mentioned, and that is, everybody that knows the work that the Lake County attorneys are doing, knows how difficult it is and how, how hardworking they are. I hired an attorney in Marin from, from Lake County. And, and the one thing that I saw in that attorney is an independent work ethic that was necessary to be able to address the caseload that he was facing in Lake County. So I appreciate all the work that has been done, and I appreciate the LID attorneys, and that's one of the reasons I want to be very transparent in working with them as we move forward, because I do respect everything that they've done.
Any other public comment?
Can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
Okay. And this is going to be really quick, because Mr. Varela made a good point.
You state your name again?
Rob Brown.
Thank you.
So uncertainty is a huge distraction. You're asking for people to do this, this big job, this huge job that they're doing. And I can tell you, I'm at the jail all the time, that's what I get paid for. They're there at nine o'clock at night. They're there on Sundays. They're there, these attorneys are there all the time, visiting their clients, doing their job, doing it, you know, trying to be as effective as they possibly can. But uncertainty is a distraction. So this, this extension of a contract, that may feel like a good thing coming from that end, but at this end, uncertainty that's felt on the fourth floor keeps good attorneys from doing their job effectively, because they're distracted by, do I have a job in 30, in 90 days, or whatever? So keep that in mind, you know, that we dealt with this with interim directors and that. The uncertainty of that is hard for the entire department. So it ripples down, and that's what's going on here. You have the uncertainty of what's going to happen with the department. Fisher cut bait, you know, get it, you know, get it out there, do it. You know, give them a year contract. Whatever you're going to do, you got to get it done, so you don't have that uncertainty that, that continues with that distraction for these people that want to do their job effectively.
Yeah.
I'll keep my comments brief, but.
You gave your name one more time.
Andrea Sullivan, a co-administrator of LID. There has been some discussion about advocacy that we could do to the state for budgets. I take a cynical and a dour view of that. I don't see any money coming down the pipeline. I see how much money we get in grants from the state. It's a pittance compared to what other counties get. We just don't have the population to make it sexy enough for the state to want to give us money. But one thing that this body can do is lobby the state to change current state law about independent contractors. The reason, and a lot of the criticisms that exist, is because independent contractors, by their very nature, in order to be legal, have to be able to be free to take other work. They can't be beholden to one entity. And all of us have professional licenses. No one would say that an anesthesiologist that has hospital privileges is an employee of that hospital, and that person would have the ability to work freely. So there's a tension between EDD and the obligations that the court and your board wants us to have. And the reason it developed into the way that it is, is to keep all of these balls in the air. And petitioning our assemblywoman and petitioning the state to change that law, at least as it applies to public defenders serving alternate or conflict counsel, is free. It just requires a little bit of time, and, you know, we could do it, but they're not going to listen to us, but they'd listen to you to say, our county doesn't have the resources to have a full alternate office, but we can have competent conflict counsel, but you need to change this, because the EDD goes after us, it's going to go after you, to make them employees. And if they're employees and you're giving them direction, you can't have the level of conflict. So it's a giant mess. And I think a non-fiscal resolution to all of this is getting that law changed. And your board has the ability to do that, especially with Mr. Varela helping along the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have a response?
As you can tell, these are, these are complex issues. This is, this is one of those kinds of things where you set aside time to actually have a workshop on, you know, to decide how it is that you want to go forward, or that you delegate it to a commission or a community panel that's going to be, you know, representative of people who receive the services. And, and so I think that some of the things that were voiced by a speaker, this is going to take time. This is going to take time. And, and so there'll be further discussions along the way as to how it is you want to move forward. But this is a complex issue that has a lot of moving parts.
Okay. Is there any further public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom Feimer, again. I just want to echo something Supervisor Brown mentioned about the, the problem of uncertainty. You know, DA Cronis and I, given our positions naturally, but also just, you know, as colleagues speak with each other regularly, she speaks about the difficulty of locating people filling positions in her office. Hers is an office that pays more than we do, offers more benefits, and also isn't, nobody's thinking that the DA's office might just go away within 90 days. And they have an extreme amount of trouble locating qualified people to be DAs there. So it's very hard to get people to commit to come to Lake County. I came from Lake County from outside the area. I think that's, it was a commitment that paid off. I'm happy to make it. I'm happy I made it. But it's very hard to get people to come to our county and commit, because we don't have just a natural pool of lawyers here. We have a very small legal community. We need to draw from without the county, and it's hard to get people to come and up in their lives with this level of uncertainty hanging over their heads. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further?
But I will tell you that having a public defender's office will lead to recruitment that is stable. Once a county commits to a public defender office, the recruitment of attorneys that either currently work in the county, that wish to transition to a public defender office, or others, once they see a stability of an office, you recruit. And one of the things that I did, and, you know, Marin County is one of the most expensive places to live. You talk about recruiting. I mean, people can't afford housing in the Bay Area. It's very, very difficult, right? And so the recruitment, you know, in Marin County was difficult. And as much as people think, oh, it's a rich county, the funding for public defender is, 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 you know, not what you would think would come from a, from a rich county. But the reality is that, once you have an established office, you use the public defender networks that exist, and the private attorney networks that exist, to recruit people to an established office. I had an internship program that I started for law students, and we couldn't hire everybody in Marin County. And I encouraged all those students to go to Kern County, to Fresno County, to San Bernardino, to different counties that needed. I had the Siskiyou County Public Defender say to me, you just keep saying that people will come up here, what? I said, you want a public defender? I went to one of my interns, and I said, look, you want to be a public defender? You know I don't have a job here, because nobody leaves here. But do you want a job? I said, you can get a job in Siskiyou County tomorrow, if you're willing to go up there. She has been up in Siskiyou County now for five, six years. And so the, the goal is really to know how to find the pockets of people who are willing to be public defenders, because that's what they want to be. They don't want to be private attorneys. They don't want the, the business component that comes with being a private attorney. They want to be public defenders. And once you establish a statutory public defender office, that gives you a recruitment base to be able to get people to say, that's stability, that's what I want. And I think another point that was really essential, and it's essential to a lot of what recruitment looks like, is the notion of parity. You know, are public defenders going to receive the same benefits, the same salary, consistent with the district attorney? Parity is essential in being able to give the true respect and the true commitment to attorneys, that in fact, they are valued just as much as the district attorney's office and the work that they do. And so those are, again, big, large points, complex points that have to be taken into account.
Great. Thank you. Any further public comment? All right, I will close public comment and bring it back. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just very briefly. So we can do both. We can be supportive of our existing defense counsel and LID, and try to signal some certainty. I mean, as has been stated, these are complex issues. No major changes, certainly not pending today. We wouldn't even know where to start, and that's why we have esteemed counsel here kind of starting this process. But I think in saying we're doing a really, really good job with the resources we have, it kind of highlights the point that you don't have many resources. Even fighting for conflict counsel with Mendocino and Sonoma County, I mean, to the extent we can keep conflict counsel interested in Lake County, it's always with one foot in another county. That's not sustainable. To the issues raised by Mr. Varela, supervision, training, accountability, competencies, can't do that with an independent contractor model that basically equates a highly-trained defense attorney with an Uber driver. So. So I, I want to be very clear, I want to attack this downslide that has happened under realignment so that you have a bare pittance of funding to do what you do with the current independent contractor model and whatever hub, you know, conflict counsel you can cobble together on top of that. And, and where we need to go, you know, I, I can't, I don't think anybody could pretend that acquittal rates, for example, are, are the best metric or the only metric we need to consider here, you know, as, as we look forward to how our indigent defendants are getting defended. So I want to be supportive, you know, I, I think we have a lot on our plate. I do like the idea of reactivating the, the committee and we can talk about that another day. But I want to be very clear, I want to be supportive of where we're at and the people that have invested in our community and who do care very passionately about our legal system. And I do want to highlight that it is not all on the defense bar. I think by far the larger part of this puzzle does involve the state, does involve the judicial council, does involve more judges and courtrooms and stuff like that. It does involve breaking the cycle of dependency of conflict counsel that we get from other counties. And I think we have to build capacity in county to do that. And I think the statutory office is one way to do that. So I just want to do that. I want to be supportive of the people who are here and working this system as best they can while also being very clear that substantial change is needed and it is not just on defense counsel to propose those changes. Thank you.
Supervisor Spatier?
Couple of things. One, I think that we need to look at, i- if possible, I would like to look at the entire system. How do we streamline it to make sure that those with little to, I won't say no resources, but with little resources can ensure that they get the best out of what they have. And so hopefully the conversation will involve our judges, will involve our district attorney as well as public defenders to ensure that we have the most streamlined method to go through these proceedings. I know that I have sat down for one, which is not a, a huge amount. I do plan to do more in the courtroom. What I saw created more questions than answers, but I, I have some concerns that come out of there where this seemed to be both on the district attorney's side as well as the public defender's side where there was swapping of lawyers because there's so many things happening that it's not possible for a single, singular lawyer to consistently be with their client at all times when they're in front of the court, which means that possibly somebody's had to catch up and review, get a brief summary of what's the situation or possibly maybe not, I don't know. And there was a lot of pushing back trial dates, which I think is all based again on the limited capacity within an individual's person's calendar to make those things happen. I hope that we will end up with a, a better position in the long run. It will cost more money, most likely, but those are things that we need to accomplish and, and without fear and just looking forward to what, what are the solutions and how can we make those solutions happen? There have been discussions in the past about the committee. I'm, I'm hopeful that we can get that back sooner than later. I know there was some looking at revising to ensure that we had some professionals within the committee and not just public at large or not just Board of Supervisors. And I hope that that can come back to us sooner than later so that we can get those summaries. And what I'd like to do is what are the metrics that we're looking for, what matters to us to ensure that we are getting the services that we want out of the relationship with a public defender's office or a public defender contractor?
Did you have something? Well, I appreciate admin and county council working on this and bringing the presentation and thank you, Mr. Varela, for, for joining us today. But I did want to ask what the next steps were.
We're going to set up a meeting with this gentleman and develop the contract and develop the next steps. And county council and I are meeting next week to start on that process. There's not much more I can tell you right now is that we're moving forward once after you were able to meet with him today. And we have revised the committee setup and it already has been published and we received one application to date.
Great. Thank you. Anything further before we close this out?
Would we be scheduling that meeting after we, we get finished with the next process of the, the committee you're speaking of?
Well, I would assume that further efforts will be made to secure applications for the committee along the lines of what your board had previously approved. A professional services agreement for Mr. Varela has been drafted and he has it under his review. I believe it's fine from his end, so we'll be getting a finalization through admin so that can move forward. So then we'll begin the initial steps as Mr. Varela had spoken about, coming back to your board repeatedly to update you.
Okay. Thank you. So we just have nine minutes until our next item. Do we have something that's short?
Seven point eight.
Seven point eight.
Thank you, Mr. Varela.
Thank you so much. Okay, we'll do seven point eight. That's what I was looking at. Consideration of Appointment to the Lake County Recreation Agency Board of Directors, Public Services. Director Ewing, I saw come in, didn't I? I don't know, I thought he was here.
He was earlier, he went to go get EJ.
Oh, right. Okay. I think we should wait for him. He's not here. I'm going to close now. All right, we will take a eight minute break. We'll come back at, okay, same, we're coming back at eleven fifteen sharp, you guys.
Sharp.
Whatever you have to tell. All right. It's eleven fifteen. We'll come back from our break. A very special item and we have a lot of guests here in attendance for our six point four, eleven fifteen AM item, Presentation of Proclamation Commending County Council Anita Grant for her thirty-one years of service to Lake County. Well, thank you, everybody, for joining us today. We're all here to celebrate a very special woman, even though this is a difficult day for a lot of us, I'm going to just stretch this out for you.
Don't you.
The Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California Proclamation Commending Anita L. Grant for her thirty-one years of service to the County of Lake. Whereas Anita L. Grant, a proud native, a proud native of Iowa, began her service with the County of Lake as a deputy county council in nineteen ninety-two and was quickly recognized as having a brilliant legal mind and an ability to work effectively with county department heads and officials on a wide variety of matters ranging from risk management to labor relations. And whereas, on retirement of the county's longtime county council in two thousand and five, Anita L. Grant was selected and appointed to the Board of Supervisors to serve in the position of county council as a position she has held for the past seventeen years. And whereas Anita L. Grant was repeatedly provided special training to the Board of Supervisors and numerous other boards, commissions and committees on a variety of important matters, including compliance with the state's open meeting laws. And whereas Anita L. Grant has provided invaluable guidance and advice to board, to members of this board during weekly meetings, advice and guidance that has assisted our board in complying with the myriad of complex laws and regulations to which county board of supervisors must adhere at all times. And whereas Anita L. Grant has skillfully handled an enormous workload, rarely missing a day of work, and having fortified vacation leave and made numerous personal sacrifices over the years, including working on weekends and holidays. And whereas Anita L. Grant has provided outstanding support to office staff as well as guidance and training to current and former County of Lake Deputy County Council attorneys, each of whom have become better legal advocates as a result of her mentorship. And whereas Anita L. Grant has consistently upheld a high standard for excellence in ethical legal advocacy, professional responsibility and leadership for the County of Lake. And whereas Anita L. Grant has announced her intention to retire on March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, although it is with regret that this board has accepted Anita L. Grant's decision to retire, it is with pleasure, we extend to her our sincerest gratitude for thirty-one years of outstanding and dedicated service to this board and the County of Lake, and we wish her good health and much happiness during her retirement. Passed and adopted this twenty-first day of March, twenty twenty-three.
Well, as to good health, if this doesn't kill me, I guess that's probably a lock. Thank you all. It's been my honor to serve the board, both present and past. You couldn't ask for a better job most days. My staff, it is wonderful, has been wonderful. I'm, I'm just pleased to see so many faces. It's nice to think you matter a little bit, but you're in good hands going forward and the county will always be my favorite place in all the world. Thank you very much.
I'm going down there.
I have a request. We're going to do two pictures, one with the current board and then I'd love all the past board members to come up and I think we need a family picture of all of us together.
And just to add to this picture. Anita, this picture will be printed out for you and we, this is our parting gift to you is a family picture of all the board of supervisors that you've worked with so that it, it could be kept in your memories. And, and I'm curious as to what the picture will look like five years from now.
All right. I'm going to open it up for public input if anybody would like to come up and share some work.
I served on the.
You got to wait for Sam.
Oh, waiting for Sam.
Should be good.
Hi. Hello, I'm, I'm Boris Brumfield and I served on the Lake County Board of Supervisors from nineteen eighty-five to nineteen ninety-two. So I only spent one year on the board while Anita was here, but there was no question that over the years after I came back and worked for the county, that Anita was instrumental in providing legal assistance and keeping us out of trouble. So thank you, Anita.
Anita, you know, the proclamation, I just broke my mic. I don't think I need it, but. The proclamation said it all, but you've been so over and above and beyond for all the years you've spent here and trying to get you to leave to go do something fun was like impossible. And, you know, it just, I just can't say enough about the time that I was able to spend, well, the whole twenty years I spent with you in one capacity or another on the, on the board, but it's unbelievable, the work ethic and everything else you had. You were a great example for every employee in the county and, you know, I, you're the only one that's brought me back to the county in five years, so, because I kind of, when I left, it was like, I'm done. So anyway, appreciate everything you've done and I hope you have a grand time in retirement. I have. Follow me around, I'll show you how to do it.
Well, Anita, I need to tell you, an honor and a privilege to know you and to work with you. And you all know, occasionally she'll give you the look. And when you get the look, you know you've screwed up up here. And she does it graciously and kind of firmly when you're directed, but thank you for your guidance, thank you for your friendship. It's been an honor and a privilege to call you a friend and get to know you. Enjoy your retirement. Iowa's going to be better when they get you back. Lake County's going to be worse when you leave. We love you. Thank you, Anita.
I'm planning on still seeing it some more, by the way, later on. So first of all, congratulations for your retirement. We could talk for days about your accomplishments and contributions here in the county and there's certainly noted, I can say, I know of no other employee for the county who's, who's given more or had more influence positively than, than you do or have had. For me, this is a little more personal. We've worked together for about thirty years now and I can say during that time, there is, there's no one whose opinion I valued more than yours. Not just your legal mind, but your thoughtfulness, your intelligence, it's mattered to me a lot and I appreciate that. Our time here together will certainly be some of the most, the fondest memories I have of working in Lake County. It's been a privilege to work with you, but more importantly, it's, it's been an honor to call you a friend. And as all I can do is wish that the, the next chapter is as good as this one, whatever you choose. And I think we're going to try to make it a good one. We still got some pie and cheesecake, right? Ready for that? All right. Thank you.
So I did get the look a few times, but most of the time I actually positioned myself, and this is no lie, I positioned myself in such a way where I didn't even look at her because I knew she was looking at me, but I, Anita affectionately referred to me as her personal EKG and, and I held up to that. You fogged up the mirror at the end of every board meeting, so that was, that was the test. And I, I'll tell you, I worked with a lot of county employees, a lot of them that retired, a lot of them are friends of mine, still are friends of mine, but there are, there is a very, very short list of people that I consider to be a friend valued for the rest of my life, like you. of my life, like you. You provided great counsel, but you provided great friendship to me through all those years. All the things that were listed in the proclamation, it can only go on for so long, but you did a good job of outlining some of those. Her training of the boards, that some of the board members paid attention, I'm pretty sure of that. I was lucky, Jeff and I were on the board when you were hired as county council, and it was a great honor for us to do that, and it was a tough pool, too, I mean, it was very competent applicants, but you were way above anyone else that could have ever applied. You really made us proud for that. I enjoyed the emails that I sent to you during board meetings and watched to make sure, see how stoic you could maintain that, without saying anything. The public didn't see your eye rolling. You positioned yourself to where I could only see that. And you did all these things, you worked hard, you worked all the weekends, holidays and all that, you did all this stuff, but you really didn't achieve the kind of success that I think you should have achieved unless you have a song written and performed for you by Joan Moss. Not all of us can get that, so I'm sorry that you didn't get the prize to that level, but thank you for everything.
And I have to follow that. Okay, so as you expected, Anita, I had to actually write this out so I can get through it. There's so much I can say about our 31 years history working together. However, as your friend, I do know that you're not fond of being the center of attention, and that occasions such as this make you somewhat uncomfortable, so I'm gonna be a little brief, well, maybe a lot uncomfortable. Anita, you've done an incredible job for the county, your advice and guidance has been invaluable to so many, and when I would hear a department head joke about you keeping them out of jail, I would just smile, knowing that my career with the county, you did just that, including one memorable instance. Anita, your ability to assess an issue and find the best solution possible is extraordinary. Not many can do that at the level you have over the many, many years. Believe me when I say it does not go unnoticed. You truly have dedicated your life to your career, and even when I tried hard to get you to take some time off, you remain steadfast in always being ready and available for every board member, every county department head, and anyone needing your guidance. Even if you may be a bit tentative at the moment for what comes next, I am confident that you will come to love retirement and the time that you have just for yourself. You will be able to read whenever you want, take the pups for a walk whenever you want, and just do whatever you want, when you want. No work deadlines, no work calls, no work texts, no work emails to be tied to at all hours of the day and night. I'm so very happy that you're taking this next step to live life, and just as importantly to me, I look forward to our continued conversations and friendship, including seeing the new chair and a half that you can now enjoy with a pup and a good book. I wish you nothing but the best, my friend.
And I'll do my best to keep this short because I promised Anita that. Anita, you are a role model for all of us in the office. You've provided so much mentorship and guidance to former and current attorneys in that office and staff, and we all became better attorneys and better persons because of your mentorship and guidance. You've given us an opportunity to succeed, time and time again, and not only that, you guided us to be successful. Your dedication to the craft is unmatched, the county is in a much better place because of your work ethic, it gives us something to strive for. And I speak on behalf of all of us in the office in saying that, well, we will miss you, we take great comfort in the fact that we'll still be in touch, of course, sooner than you think. And I hope that, I just hope that you won't be too annoyed by us calling you too much. So thank you, Anita, for everything, and congratulations on your retirement.
So you may not remember, the first time I interviewed with you, I was moving from another department, so I was interviewing directly with you, and you started out the interview with one of the best, you said to me, it's like, "The job is yours if you want it." And then we broke down and started going through what you expected from me, what the job was going to be, and did I want that job? And I remember thinking that, one, I enjoyed the bluntness, it worked very well, and that this was a place that I was going to enjoy working for and someone I would enjoy working for. I just wanted to say that as I go forward in my job and my career, the integrity at which you practice law and dealt with everyone is something that I try and emulate on a daily basis. So congratulations on your retirement, and, yeah, I can't say anything else, but thank you very much.
Well, I'm the last one, are you happy now, Anita? My sister from another mister. You deserve it, and I want to thank you for those 30 years where I had to eat cold or burnt dinner because you and Kathy were the only one working in the courthouse till all hours of the night. So now it's time to go see Iowa, get them dogs out, and do it. Enjoy retirement. Love you, sis.
Anita, I have so enjoyed working with you, you've taught me a lot, I will truly miss our 7:00 PM phone calls when we solve all the problems, but I aspire to be half of the woman you are. You are truly inspiring, and I will miss you.
Good morning, Anita. Usually I pick Mike up at the airport, but I had to call his wife to go pick him up today because I had to come and present this to you, and he said to me, "Are you sure? Don't you want to send Jan? You know, she probably has to go to the ranch for some reason." And I said, "Oh, no, 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 no." But I wanted to come on his behalf and let you know that last Friday on the House floor, he shared with his colleagues the following. "Mr. Speaker, I rise today to honor Anita Grant, who is retiring after 31 years of service to Lake County as a member of the county's legal council. An Iowa native, Ms. Grant started her career with Lake County in 1992 as a deputy county council. She quickly stood out as an exceptional attorney, oftentimes working with county officials on issues like criminal justice and civil rights. Hard work and preparation as a litigator were essential in assuring strong representation for interests of Lake County at the local, state, and federal levels of the legal system. Ms. Grant's commitment to public service was unrelenting, especially during election years, where she would provide an unbiased review and explanation of ballot propositions that have appeared in front of Lake County voters. She also helped with the operation of ballot counting equipment to make sure all votes could quickly and accurately be counted. She also provided special training to officials on navigating through complex sets of laws, regulations that they had to adhere to while running elections. Ms. Grant's leadership, legal expertise, and dedication have made her an indispensable member of the Lake County community. She always maintained an open-door policy for county officials who wanted to hear her advice and legal guidance on important issues. Her commitment can be seen, could be seen in her strong work ethic, as she rarely missed work, forfeited vacation leave, and worked on weekends and holidays to get her job done despite her heavy workload that she faced. I might add, Mike wanted me to emphasize that I should learn from what is said here, and I said to him, "After 33 years, you better be careful, pal." Ms. Grant's legal work as county council has helped the residents of Lake County by supporting the county's financial well-being. Her assistance in supporting better financial circumstances for Lake County has also helped the county afford to reliably provide necessary services for its residents. Mr. Speaker and colleagues, Anita Grant has been an indispensable part of Lake County's community for the past 31 years, and her legal service will be fondly remembered as she heads into retirement. Therefore, it is fitting and proper that we honor her today.
I believe it's with you.
I do have a question, does everybody know I want to be asking?
Am I honored to step up on the dais? Oh, nice. Oh, that's great. Perfect, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for telling me, Brad.
You bet.
Just want to make sure there's no one in the Zoom room, I'm not seeing any hands up. Oh, there we are.
And I have a written note from someone as well.
Okay, great. Jonathan Louis?
I was told by some people that you're having a thing today, so I decided to tune in. I listened into what Lloyd said, and I definitely want to second that one. You have been absolutely instrumental in training me and teaching so many things, and I think back to that first day when you first interviewed me, and you promised me nothing but excitement at work, never a boring day, and I have to admit, after leaving, you know, nothing really compares anymore. But...
You should come back, Jonathan.
More importantly than anything else, I wanted to say that a lot of times when I encounter difficulties outside now, I do ask myself, "What would Anita do in this situation?" Usually it has never guided me wrong, and I do hope that you are able to take some time off, because I do remember that day when, I think, I think it was before Christmas, where I was supposed to be off, and you were supposed to be off, and you caught me in the parking lot of the county building, going to file something in court at the last minute.
And he had jeans on, which never happened with Jonathan's.
But I did want to say, thank you for everything, and I do hope you have an excellent retirement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, and there's an email from Dana Schott, I hope I pronounced the name correctly, there's two As. So she says, "I just want to say thank you for being the amazing person and friend that you have been for all the years that she has known you. You have changed her life in many more ways than you know, and for that, she cannot thank you enough. You've guided her pathway to college and without all of your support and pushing her when she felt like giving up, and you even showed up to her graduation to see her success. She may not be where she is right now without that. She will miss you tremendously and all of your laughs and conversations that you used to have with her. You'll be greatly missed in the county, and she wishes you a happy retirement and lots of travel adventures and fun times with your fur kids. She knows you don't like public recognition, just as Lars and Katie don't, ha ha," she said, "but she couldn't let you think you were going to get away silently without thanking you for all you have done for the county and for her as well."
Supervisor Green?
Let's just stretch this out till noon, let's come back after the break, we could make you uncomfortable. Number one, I want to thank everyone here who explained how I'm supposed to be acting as a supervisor, apparently I've been letting you off light, and so I have not been doing the midnight oil phone calls, but I have three days left, and I hope to make up for last time and bring any number of really arcane legal issues to you, just because, just because. I see you're a proud native of Iowa, as my late father was, I never understood that, but if you're proud to be a native of Iowa, more power to you, and if you really want to go back there and see hogs and corn and whatever they have in Iowa, you know, more power to you. But my first exposure to your character as a person was when another person retired, our former registrar of voters, Diane, and we had a lovely retirement dinner, and you rolled in with the gift of all gifts, and it was these rocking cowboy boots that were just so like, one, I couldn't see you giving them, and then, two, I couldn't see Diane Freely wearing them, but as it turns out, it's a wide, wonderful world, and I was excited to see that. And since then, you know, I've been watching you for several years, not on this dais, coming before you on cannabis issues and stuff like that, and I've always been very impressed with your ability to analyze issues on the fly, to not get upset when everyone else around you is upset. I do want to take note that you've been in your office for 17 years, still as a woman in a position of such prominence, it is, it stands out less now than maybe it used to, but it can be hard to sit in a room full of people mansplaining stuff to you, and I want to celebrate your strength, not only as a great county council, but your strength as a woman in standing up and providing such great guidance to this county. I think you're a pioneer, and I think other women in this county can look to you as a role model, and I certainly hope they do. Thank you for all that you've done.
Go ahead.
Anita, so it's funny, the similar things that many of us Board of Supervisors, past and present, have gone through, it did not take much arm twisting to get many of you to show up today because that's how much you're touching all of us. It's not just a relationship between Board of Supervisor and County Council. By sitting in your office and talking to you about the problems that I'm looking at, I get to know you as an individual, and nobody's talked about her sense of humor. She has an amazing sense of humor, there's not one moment that I go visit where I'm not laughing, and it's out of left field, I don't even know it's coming sometimes, but I love her sense of humor. But by having those conversations with you, which sometimes feel like it should be on a couch council type of conversation, "I need help," but I get to know more than just you, I get to know about your father, I get to know about your sister, I get to know about your childhood, and that's where the friendship begins. And it's so much more than just a professional relationship that we've built, it's very personal, very, very personal. And it sounds to me like you've reached out and made that connection with just about everybody in this room, it feels. I am so sad that you are leaving, but I am so happy for you, because you've done an amazing job for an amazing amount of time, and you have not slept one day since you've been here. And I am worried about your postal worker, though, because I know your 2:00 AM shopping will now become your 2:00 PM shopping, and so they're gonna have to get some extra routes going to your house sooner or later. But I look forward to see what you do in your retirement, and I hope that we don't stop seeing one another, because you mean a lot to me.
So Anita, my time of service while working with you has been one of my most joyous experiences. My previous experience with legal council was with attorneys that had billable hours, and so I limited my discussions with them. And not all attorneys that I've worked with before had worked with before had as much integrity as you have. You know, your wit, professionalism, and overall tact while serving is impeccable. I appreciate you attending my town halls and conducting training sessions with the Brown Act and getting us all on board, all back on track, because sometimes we will stray off, as everyone has said. Coming up with verbiage to save the day on numerous occasions, especially with the most controversial items that we're dealing with here, was just, we're sitting here going back and forth, and then Anita comes up with a phrase, and we're like, yes, use that, use that. So moved. So it's just those things, having our discussions, like our discussion yesterday, where it kind of goes off into other discussions. However, we know it's relevant to what we're talking about, and I enjoy my time that I spend coming to your office and having those discussions. And I'm confident that the other supervisors, emeritus, had the same relationship in their own way. And so I hope you enjoy the big chair, your hogging dots, probably endless supply from here forward, and then more time with the doggies. And so, again, gonna miss you.[669.82][669.82](applause)
I think it's clear from all the comments today that you're going down in legend as one of the great fierce women that have worked for the county of Lake. And we are all so honored to serve with you, and your example of the highest level of integrity has been imprinted on all of us. And I fully expect you to be walking your dogs and waving at us and making faces through the window on Tuesdays. I know that's going to happen on your way to get ice cream, but you do deserve all that time on your chair and a half with your cuddled up dogs. And we're going to miss you incredibly, but wish you the very best for your retirement and all the enjoyment of life before you. Thank you so much.[723.13][723.13](applause) So we will welcome all of you to share some brownies and some hugs and probably some tears, too. We'll reconvene at 1:00 following lunch, and I hope you can stick around for a little bit. Okay, we are back in session. I'm logged out of Zoom, so. Are you logged on Zoom?
No.
Okay. God, it's so hard to do that link. Okay, I just want to get started. I think I'd like to do 7.6, since we have our ag commissioner hanging out with us the whole day. 7.6, consideration of resolution rescinding resolution 92129 and 2012-98 and reestablishing the bylaws of the Lake County Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee. And our ag commissioner.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board. Catherine VanderWaal, Agricultural Commissioner. So recently, your board requested that the Lake County Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee bylaws be amended to include committee seats for tribal representation. Additionally, the amended bylaws also include staggering committee member terms so as to prevent committee members all expiring at once. And I'd like to thank the admin office for their support on these changes to the bylaws. Does your board have any questions?
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. I did email you, and I don't recall if we gave specific direction on the number of seats, but my question was, 13 is a lot. And we're always balancing between inclusivity and being effective in managing committees. And when you have a 13-member committee, and the seats don't all get filled, you don't get a quorum, then for all the best intents and purposes, you don't have a functional committee. And I have other committees that were kind of struggling getting people up and running again, too. So my only question is, not should we be doing this, but is 13 too much? Is there a nine or 11-member variation that the board would have comfort with, that would still be representative while being easier to manage?
Supervisor Spatier?
Appreciate the question. I guess the question directly to our ag commissioner would be, historically, I don't believe that's been an issue, and granted, we're adding two new positions, but I don't believe there's been a history of quorum not being met and the inability for Fish and Wildlife to pursue their goals as a committee.
Correct. To my knowledge, it has not been an issue.
And my understanding is that the two new additional seats, there's motivation for those seats to be filled, so I don't think that that is either going to be a new hurdle for us to overcome. I think this can easily just happen. So I'm in support of what it is, but I'd love to hear from you if that does become a problem in the future, so that we can maybe correct it.
Right. And as of right now, excuse me, the committee, pardon me, the committee is almost full. We just have two vacancies, but we do have a quorum. So those who have been appointed to the committee are looking forward to their first meeting.
Yeah. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, just one question about the representatives from the tribal government. Is it like, does it have to be the leadership or their appointee from their tribal government? So, for example, tribal council member won't make it, but they'll appoint like their director or their fish, someone that has to do with fish or some specialized position?
Right. To my knowledge, there's no prerequisite, so it could just be anybody, you know, representing two separate tribes, yeah.
Okay.
But it is an individual that's appointed that needs to be, not an open seat.
Yeah, not an open seat. They'll have to like appoint. It's kind of like, like when we appoint someone, there's like a resolution to whatever entity that we're, yeah, so something like that.
Okay.
Not a resolution, I'm sorry, but just a letter saying, this is who we appointed.
The application filled out, yeah. And the other part of this that we discussed in our previous meeting was to give direction, but it's not on the agenda, so is that something we have to come back and do?
Well, if you want to direct staff to bring something in particular back to you, you can do that by consensus, but that would be the most you could do.
Okay. Well, it was, I think, discussed at length during our previous meetings, that we want this committee to be focused on the hitch and have the opportunity to workshop different things that come up. And so if we could bring that back for discussion, that would be helpful if everyone, if we have consensus. Supervisor Spatier?
And two things. One, I think part of the issue with the current status of the committee is that this is why you're staggering the years, is because everybody got kind of kicked off all at the same time. So recreating something from scratch, rather than just trying to get half of them back on, is a different situation. As far as what the chair just brought up, I don't see in the bylaws, and I didn't notice this before, but there's no purpose of the Fish and Wildlife, that if somebody does want to review the bylaws, it helps them to better understand what the focus of the conversation is. And so if it's possible, maybe approving what it is today, just because we want to open up those seats, but maybe implementing the purpose, or maybe on our website, where it says where the, what the committee is to have a purpose, so we better understand, and that can be part of the goals or part of the purpose.
Okay. My apologies, because I thought the purpose was in there. It might have been in a previous form of the bylaws.
It's been charged, Lake County Fish and Wildlife Committee has been charged with advising the board on fish and wildlife, their habitats and conservation.
And on page three, the whole list of powers and functions.
It's the second whereas.
But the whereas is not the bylaws.
Right.
This is our resolution of approving the bylaws, and I think that it should be within the bylaws to make it real easy for any member to look at the bylaws and get the full grasp of the committee.
Okay.
But again, don't want to stop the membership change today, because I think it's important to start advertising, so that the next meeting, you can have that full committee.
Okay.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Anyone in Zoom?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm sitting here. I don't see any.
Oh, you're not a panelist?
Yeah, I'm not a panelist. That's, yeah.
Do we have anyone, Johanna, with their hands up? Okay.
I'm now a panelist, so.
All right. Bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I offer the resolution.
Supervisor Spatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Piska?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two public service items. Can start with 7.7, consideration of Section 20 of the county policies and procedures for, manual for a facilities capital improvement plan. Policy Director Eileen.
Good afternoon, Board. Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. What is up for Board's consideration today is a facilities capital improvement plan policy. Your board may recall that one of the objectives of my department right now is to create a capital improvement plan specific to facilities or county buildings. We have a lot of data to be able to prepare a capital improvement plan for renovation-type projects, but when we look at really what is, what are the type of capital projects that we may, the county may pursue for buildings, it's much more than just the basic maintenance of the building or even expansion of the building. It has a lot to do with the building occupants. And oftentimes, the occupants, in this case, the majority would be other departments, they would be the entities who would be proposing a project. So I felt like it was important that we had a policy that essentially directed from your board, directed department heads to have involvement, have input on what their projects are over the coming five years, any given five-year window in the future. So what I came to is a policy that just spells it out, spells out that process, indicates how the department heads would be involved, what input we would be required, they would be required to provide, and how we balance that with renovation-type projects. So the policy that is put in front of you relatively straightforward, relatively simple, the process really is intended to be tied into the budget process. So department heads would be familiar with that process for projects that they might envision for that upcoming fiscal year. The expectation is that we're looking beyond that. What are the type of projects that they may be envisioning? There's nothing that binds them to that. We're talking about a plan. We're not allocating or appropriating any money for those out years, but it's important that we get input from the users. That was the impetus behind a policy. I'm not, I don't want to be overly bureaucratic and create a policy simply to have a policy, but I think it's important for the board to have that direction, so that department heads understand that this is something that they do need to provide input on. So the policy is here before your consideration. The next steps after, if your board approves this, we would begin development of the plan itself, getting input from department heads, and then embedding it with the budget process for presentation of that capital improvement plan for facilities. So happy to answer any questions and appreciate your support.
Thanks. Supervisor Spatier?
So there's two things that come to mind, and maybe they're unnecessary or not very relevant for this, but one, I know that you did a study of all of the facilities that we have. You seem uncomfortable. And I don't see in there where public services would offer, because if you know you have a building that really needs to have their roof renovated, and the department, for some reason, for whatever reason, has not made a request for something to be resolved, you do have that capital improvement plan that you've kind of created and looked into all the different facilities, that you would have that higher level knowledge to say, we need to bring this project forward. I know that you kind of run this policy, and so maybe it's not needed to put you inside the policy, but it seems to only come from departments. And I want to make sure that department heads, who may feel shy about asking, because they're asking for other special projects outside of capital improvements, or those that just don't know that they should be asking, maybe because they're new, I don't know, many different reasons why that would not happen, that your department is able to say, we really need to prioritize doing this. It wasn't requested, but this is something that we have to do.
Okay. And you're right, that wasn't envisioned, at least with respect to rehabilitation-type projects. And that's a, you know, those are the type of projects that my department might initiate, where, you know, replacing of an HVAC system. A roof is worn, so we're going to do that. Not an expansion of use or, you know, moving walls around that helps the operations of their department operations. The type of projects that my department would put forward for all the buildings would be those rehab-type projects. So my expectation was that public services would be submitting a project for Building A for a rehab, but also on that same Building A, the department head would submit something for more renovation-type projects. And that was the way I kind of broke it down, for renovation versus rehab. So if it's for clarity and maybe for posterity's sake, to ensure that it is spelled out in there, I could certainly indicate that public services will, in line with the facility condition assessments that have been performed, you know, include in the capital improvement plan renovation-type projects that may not be proposed by department heads.
Okay. And then my last one, and again, maybe it doesn't belong, and maybe I'm confused between rehab and renovation. I apologize for that. But in the criteria, would it not fit at all to ensure that our buildings are meeting, kind of like all the work that's been done to put LED lights, windows that help with our energy bill, things like that? Because I definitely want to give some ability for us to make those types of improvements. But again, maybe I'm incorrect in requesting that be a criteria.
No, I, far be it from me to say you're incorrect, but I would agree with you that that needs to be a consideration, and the intent of criteria five there was...
So environmental quality was the...
That was the idea there.
Yeah. I was going to ask if that was the case. Thank you.
Okay. Any comment from the public? Anyone in the Zoom room?
I'm not on it, am I?
Oh, Johanna?
Nope, there isn't.
Okay. All right. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just real quick, facilities CIP process. So just want to make sure we don't have a non-facilities CIP process already floating around. I don't need to distinguish that. It's all facilities all the time under this, and I'm only asking because the form on page seven doesn't say facilities capital improvement. It just says capital project. So do we have just this one capital CIP process that we're going to be creating basically for facilities by default? Are there other CIP processes I'm not aware of that this would run in parallel to?
Yes, there are other CIP processes, roads, for example, water, wastewater. There could be capital projects that extend beyond there, but when we're talking about public infrastructure, we've never had a capital improvement plan for facilities. So to start at a high level and bring in everything, parks, buildings, grounds, water, wastewater, roads, that's a big animal to attack. And most of the other departments, I don't want to speak for public works or special districts, but I'm fairly certain they do have those capital improvement plans. And so to have them separate, I felt was much more efficient. The intent here is our capital, basically building projects, you know, infrastructure projects on a building. Any capital planning that might extend beyond that, say, equipment, you know, IT-type stuff, would not be included here. We're talking about the fixed structure of a building.
Then totally housekeeping, totally your discretion.
Put that on that. No, I understood.
On page seven, where it says capital project planning request, I might distinguish that with the word facilities or the specific stream you're talking about, but that's just a housekeeping observation. Thank you.
Supervisor Spatier?
I'll say that I agree with that change, adding facility. That way, it's very specific. And maybe, if possible, since obviously I seem to have misunderstood, but improves, number five can be changed to improves the environmental quality slash impact or aesthetics of county facilities. So that quality did not quite fit. I get it that sequo has quality in it, but the impact of overall, I think, is what we're aiming for.
Add that. If any of the changes, can we address them here? Do we need to come back for approval at a later date?
I think that on its face, we're not changing a whole lot. I think we can make that happen today.
Do it there. All right.
If there's consensus for that, those changes. And if there is... And if there is, it looks like we're done. And so, Madam Chair, I move to approve Section 20 of the...
Yeah. Section 20.
I heard no, as if I was supposed to...
No, let's answer the question.
So I move to approve Section 20 of the County Policies and Procedures Manual for a Facilities Capital Improvement Plan Policy with amendments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, and we can move on to 7.8, consideration of appointments to the Lake County Recreation Agency Board of Directors.
All right, good afternoon. Lars Ewing, Public Services Director, once again. Last week, your Board approved the county's participation in the Lake County Recreation Agency Joint Powers Authority. A part of that, that agreement requires your Board to appoint membership to that Board. The agreement calls for two members of your Board to be direct members and then one alternate to be identified. So for your Board's consideration, I would request that we make those appointments.
Well, thanks for bringing this. And for county-wide equity, I would recommend that supervisors that are not part of the cities be appointed.
And looking at me, I would tend to agree. The two cities are represented, along with a to-be-determined from the JPA Board, an at-large member, but on its surface, there would be four city representatives already on the Board.
Any other comments? Anything from the public? Anybody in Zoom? What?
I'm just curious. There's not much to comment on if we don't know who wants to be.
Oh, right.
There's three people to choose from. It would be nice to say who's wanting to be on there and who's not.
Well, there's only two supervisors.
Well, we can volunteer somebody to be on the Board.
Yeah, but he's part of the city. His district, district line goes into the city.
He's got such a tiny part.
Okay, well, I mean, that is part of the discussion.
And I don't disagree, and that was going to be my comment, is that it's nice to be on the Board, but the idea should be to have good representation on there. So I agree with more unincorporated, but he has such a large area to the south of the city that I would not want him to feel obligated to say no.
Okay. Well, then, open it up for nominees.
Oh, real quick question, then. Isn't there, equity concerns aside, isn't there general, you know, if the proposed projects getting floated around are occurring within a district, you know, the typical approach would be the supervisors of those districts would have input? So you're saying for equity reasons, we would purposefully exclude those supervisors?
Yes. That's what I'm saying.
And is that...
Because the unincorporated counties would have no representation. I'm sorry, the unincorporated districts of the county would have zero representation.
Okay, that's interesting.
Supervisor Sabatier?
If I may elaborate a little bit, part of the JPA's job is to look at how we're going to fund this. And in looking at how we're going to fund this, you're going to have to understand how those who are not in a city district are going to say, "Yes, we can support this." Having a district supervisor who better understands how those people are going to see and experience that potential ballot measure or whatever it is that it might be, I think, is an important part of ensuring that something is approved so we can move forward. And if we don't understand what the perspective of the unincorporated areas is, then we may be making decisions based solely from a city perspective rather than a county-wide perspective. And so that's why I would support Supervisor Crandall to be on the...
Yeah, no, I was already ready.
We've been talking about North Shore a while, and I would love to have his voice on this to make sure that we're understanding those that are furthest away from city areas to kind of give that feedback, so.
Yeah, no, I was prepared, if nominated, to do so, or at least, you know, offered to do it myself, because I talked to Lars about a lot of this, especially in regards to recreation, and we talk about my area quite frequently, and having that voice for them. So, yeah, I'd be willing to.
What about you, Madam Chair? Are you interested in being in this committee?
Yes, I am. I just want to share that my husband is president of the Channel Cats, and that's a swim organization in the county. I don't view it as a conflict, because I am certainly an advocate for recreation throughout the county, parks, trails, and I really do want to see this pool happen. So I just need to bring that up for all of you.
And I'm just going to add, you know, I get to where this JPA came from. It's from the interest in forming pools. We have two preferred sites for a recreation facility and one for a pool. The recommended site for a pool, feasible or not, whether it gets funded or not, happens to be in my district. The majority of my district is unincorporated, notwithstanding my small city in the middle of it. And I think it's good to have, not only advocates for what's going on, but also people who are going to keep an eye on the budget and make sure our reach doesn't exceed our grasp. To the extent it has been identified of a project of potential import in my district, I don't necessarily want to see my ability to participate in this JPA.
So thinking about what you just said, Chair Pyska, I don't think the conversation is whether or not we are looking at a pool anymore. I think that conversation has come and gone. And I don't believe there's any personal gain whether or not you continue utilizing the pool that exists, or whether it's a new swimming pool, and the conversation is not what are we going to build, it's how are we going to build it. So I'd say because of that specific question, and how are we going to organize to ensure that it can remain maintained and we fulfill the costs of the development, I don't believe that that leaves you in a position of conflict. And so if you are interested, and in the absence of Supervisor Simon, who may have an overloaded itinerary already, I would love to nominate both Chair Pyska and Supervisor Crandall. And Supervisor Green and myself can have conversations with our city counterparts and see how things are going, from their perspective, and support them in those ways.
Okay. Now I'll open it up for public comment.
If I could be, the first public to comment is the alternate, as well, needs to be considered. The two, there's two members and one alternate that would need to be...
I think we could nominate Vice Chair Simon as the alternate.
Oh, you need two and an alternate?
Yeah.
Two, yes.
Two and an alternate.
I'm good.
Okay. Is there anyone in the Zoom room?
I don't see any hands up.
Okay. Then I will bring it back to the Board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Chair Pyska and Supervisor Crandall as the primary members to this JPA, and Supervisor Simon as the alternate to the Lake County Recreation Agency.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lars. Okay, now we will move on to 7.5, consideration of presentation and discussion on capacity of Lake County Water Resources Department Development and Implementation of a Clear Lake Hitch Fisheries Program. Water Resources.
Good afternoon, Board. Scott DeLeon, Public Works and Water Resources Director. I'm here with Deputy Director Delajana. She will begin today with presentation, with just a very short presentation about the current state of affairs with water resources, our current projects and programs, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. Marina Delajanas, Deputy Water Resources Director. As Director Scott DeLeon stated, we are here to discuss with the Board and the community the capacity of our Lake County Water Resources Department Development and Implementation of a Clear Lake Hitch slash Fisheries Program. I will be using the two interchangeably. Moving forward, so I would just like to provide a brief overview of our Lake County Water Resources Department and Lake County Watershed Protection District. I'm just going to be referring to us as the department. We are the same team, just wearing different hats when we use Water Resources versus Watershed Protection District. So here on the table, on the left-hand side, you can see a few of our different programs and projects that our department oversees and coordinates. What I do not have here are the different subtasks and subprojects that we oversee that relate to the broad overview. So I will be going through these individually. So we oversee Highland Springs Recreation Area.
There's a mouse.
Oh, I don't know either. Okay, cool, great. Glad we got that figured out. We also do conduct surface water quality monitoring, lake bed management. So with lake bed management, of course, we take in all of the permits for the construction of structures on the lake, aids to navigation, ensuring navigable waters on our beautiful Clear Lake, invasive mussel prevention, which is one of our biggest programs and one of our most important, to reduce the invasion of ouraguasera mussels that we do not have in Clear Lake, our Middle Creek Restoration Project, which I've spoken to the Board about a few times now, the Clean Water Program, groundwater management, for example. We also oversee our Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan. That's an example of another sub-project under groundwater management, including the management and the monitoring of the additional groundwater basins throughout the county, aquatic plant management, stormwater management, flood management, the NFIP Program, which is the National Flood Pain Insurance Program, overall environmental education and outreach. We have an awesome team, and if you've been lucky to hear of some of their education and outreach, you know that our staff does a mighty fine job of education, educating our community about Clear Lake and the watershed. Another big item is just meeting other state and federal requirements and mandates, levy management, and then overall watershed management and planning. So again, you can see the wide range of work that we do in our department. And then going on over to the right-hand side, I have just a few bullet points of fast facts, right? So our department is tasked with the protection and preservation of Clear Lake. Again, we are able to achieve that with the many programs and projects we oversee, as shared on the left-hand part of the slide. With this, we wear many, many hats. Our team is small but mighty. We have 11 full-time employees made up of program coordinators and invasive species program coordinators, water resources technicians, a field maintenance staff, senior water resources engineer. We are overseen by our fearless leader, Director Scott DeLeon, myself as deputy director, and then our admin staff that works very hard to communicate with the public and, of course, oversee our budgets. On that note, we oversee nine budget units in our department, with the majority of the funds coming from grant funds. Something that I don't have on the left hand of the slide are all the grants that our staff eagerly seek out and apply for and coordinate and manage. That is a heavy lift, so I want to give them the kudos and appreciation for that. And the programs that I have asterisks here on the left-hand side, those are the programs that a lot of the funding does come from grant funds. We all understand that grant funding is not sustainable. We have a lot of requirements that we have to meet, and it takes a lot of time for our staff to apply and oversee those. The next slide here, I apologize, it is small, but I have just a few different examples of other fisheries programs that are going on throughout the state. On the left-hand side, I have the organizational chart of Sonoma County Water Agency, a great water agency in our surrounding, in a neighboring county. Their funding looks a lot different than ours. They get a lot more funding, a lot more income, and therefore, they're able to house 260 employees to do a lot of the work that we do. So that just demonstrates some of the capacity that they take and that they have that we are lacking here. Another example is the Riverside Corona Resource Conservation District. They have a native fish project as well, but they work very closely with our friends at the California Department of Fish and Wildlife and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife. And then the majority of the fisheries programs that are going on and that have been going on throughout our state are led by our friends at the California Department of Fish, emphasis, and Wildlife. They have a lot of hatcheries, which are really cool. This is just a snippet of those, but we lean on them for the expertise as well. I would just also like to highlight some of our tribal communities throughout the county that do a lot of great fisheries work as well. We do work very collaboratively with those entities, along with our friends at Fish and Wildlife, state and federal level, to continue the collaboration and efforts as it relates to habitat conservation protection, but just wanted to highlight some specific examples. Now, the next slide, I apologize, I don't like a lot of text usually on slides, but I did want to make this known. What are the anticipated needs for successful implementation? So unfortunately, this is not a one-and-done. This would take a lot of time, effort, planning, resources, money that we do not currently have. So just to start out, a rough estimate, we would need at least $1 million to initiate the program. With that, we would also need long-term sustainable funding source, so not just funding to start out the program, but how can we ensure sustainability? That's a key word that we like to use in our department, ensuring that the momentum is not lost and kept. With that, we would also need additional funding to sustain our correlating department programs. I highlighted a few of those. We all know that they go hand-in-hand. Some specific examples include water quality monitoring. We've gotten some funds from grants and the state in the past. We've also recently approached the Blue Ribbon Committee to sustain our water quality monitoring program, groundwater recharge, and stream enhancement and monitoring. We know if we have no water, or if the water quality is not in best condition, that's not going to be the best for our hitch friends. To onboard, we would need additional staff members. Examples include four additional staff members. We do not have a fisheries biologist. Our team is very smart, and we do have some staff members that have background in fisheries, but that is, we would need a dedicated fisheries biologist to help us start this program, along with technician and then seasonal fieldwork employees as well. Again, that would just get us going if this route were to be explored. And then with that, I would need more space to host our friends. We are currently on the third floor. We are packed like sardines in there, so we would need additional department space, storage, and lab space to house the additional staff, equipment needed, and resources to actually sustain this program. And of course, with that, we would need additional necessary equipment to conduct the monitoring, studies, and project. So as Director Scott DeLeon said, this was a super short and sweet presentation, but with that, I will go ahead and pass it to my director to add anything else that I may have missed, and if not, we'll look at the Board for future conversations.
I don't have anything else to add. I appreciate the work done on this. I guess the bottom line, and we didn't put a summary, but I'll summarize that, and that is, we're full with tasks. We're short on funding, and to add a program is, well, it's going to be a challenge, and Marina stood a good job of capturing some of the things that we think about if, as moving forward with a new program to add. From the administrative side, I would expect there'd be a new budget unit, and it just keeps compounding. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions, have any discussion, anything the Board chooses.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes. Heard you loud and clear on the funding, and with your help, last week, I was able to testify in front of the Senate hearing about specific infrastructure, basically, but I just, just to give you an idea of one of the statements that was made from the committee was, everything that you all helped me with was said by one of your colleagues from Santa Cruz. So I just gave the insight of, well, we would like to see something called a rural set-aside, so we can have direct funding into projects like you're talking about, rather than competing with others. And Chair Caballero said, stated that, "Do you have any in mind?" So I'm like, "Let's get a list together," and working with RCRC to get a list together too, so I can follow up on that and make sure we can get some projects designed out that can be a rural set-aside, hopefully. So just letting you know that.
So conceptually, what would the fisheries program look like ideally?
So I am not prepared to speak on behalf of that. So with the research, I mean, we would need to set time aside to look at how that would actually work or look. Again, the research I've done, you know, there's great examples with Sonoma County Water, other re programs. I would look at those to, you know, why reinvent the wheel, but I would also really like to invite other interested communities to that table. I would need the expertise and insight. I would need the expertise and insight, like I said, from the additional communities we work with, including tribal, state, and federal agency as well.
Okay. Supervisor Spatier.
I believe.
Oh, sorry, Supervisor Green.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this item. And a couple of quick questions. So I assume part of it, bringing this today, is just to be responsive. We did the emergency proclamation. And I don't know if it was unclear in the proclamation or if maybe you took an ass. Because when I thought fisheries, we can make the call, I remember in the proclamation, we made that call to CDFW versus the department. So, and you mentioned in the slides there were some locally-driven fisheries programs. But am I misunderstanding? I thought CDFW would have primary authority to set up and fund and operate fisheries programs, for the most part, but I may be 20 years out of whack on that. So question one is, wouldn't CDFW normally be in the driver's seat on a fisheries program, whatever that may be? And then the second ask is to the emergency proclamation itself. And one thing I'm very keyed in on is, Blue Ribbon Commission, all these great long-term projects are great, but it's, I'm still really struggling hearing actions that can be taken this year on an emergency basis to really change the fortunes of this fish. And thankfully, Mother Nature has chimed in and given us some water that hopefully will be the game changer. But we also had a call in there in the emergency proclamation that, similar to the fishery program, you may not have capacity to do. And that, we talked about possibly altering operations of the reservoirs on Adobe Creek to possibly give us some opportunity for burst flows or fish flows during rescue events. And I'm going to guess, just based on the presentation, we may not have capacity to do that either right now. So I'm getting a shake of the head there. So in both cases, you know, the Watershed Protection District and then Water Resources, we have the facilities, we have the streams, we have the things that we could move around in terms of fishery program or even absent a fishery program this year, burst flows in the streams. So I just want to make sure I didn't miscommunicate or that the proclamation didn't miscommunicate. We want you to be able to do things you have capacity to do. But if you tell us you don't have capacity, which seems to be the case, then I guess the next thing, which isn't presented here today, is do we start banging on CDFW's door? And I think that's a fair question for myself, because CDFW does have prime authority over what happens in the lake. They do have the revenue streams that we don't, and they do have the expertise that we don't. So to both questions, the fishery question, wouldn't CDFW be the primary agency of interest if we were to do that? And same thing with interim flows on the structures. If we needed help to do something this April, again, we have rain now, but if we get into some fish rescues and stuff like that, we need to do some burst flows out of the dam, wouldn't we need help from CDFW, Army Corps, any number of other agencies? Because we don't have capacity locally. I apologize for the length of the question, but I just want to acknowledge the hard work, that you probably don't have capacity. But in the emergency proc, there were two questions. And one was fisheries in general, which is on the agenda. And the other one was interim flows, which is not.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Is this agenda item and this ask so that you can implement the asks that are in the proclamation?
Well, I'm going to apologize if we've missed the target here. We were under the impression that there was an interest in the Watershed Protection District, Water Resources, being more engaged and having more of a presence in a hitch program. And so in order to do that, that's what that last slide looks like, is if that's the direction that we're going, that's what that would look like. You're absolutely correct, Supervisor Green, that the state Fish and Wildlife has been on this lake studying the hitch. They have the expertise, they have the funding. We certainly need to be engaged with them and be a part of that discussion and have a seat at the table. I think we have the capacity to devote staff to attend meetings, to be engaged, to represent the local government in those discussions. And those have been ongoing. And, you know, we're getting invited to those now. And again, I think we have the capacity to do that. To expand, we don't. There, we, in the whole course of releasing more water or doing something with the structures that we have, you've heard my testimony before, we don't know if we have the capacity to do that. I don't know what happens if we open the gate and let water out, if it even gets past the Bell Hill Low Water Crossing. We don't know what it will do. However, I have committed that if that's necessary, we will work collaboratively with the state, with the local tribes, anyone that has concerns and has a need. We will work together to see if we can make something happen. We don't know what's going to happen. We just don't. There's been a lot of talk about the Adobe Creek Conjunctive Use Project and going after funds. And we use the term shovel-ready a lot. A lot of the projects that we have are not shovel-ready. We have not invested in the development of plans and specifications for those construction projects. And I think that, you know, if there was ever an ask of this board, it would be, help us with the funding to get those projects shovel-ready, recognizing that there's an interest in releasing water out of the dams for additional flows. Those projects would go a long ways towards providing the storage, the additional storage, to be able to do that. Again, not sure the water's going to end up downstream, but at least we would have the capacity to do it. So I think that would be the ask. I personally, and we all work at the direction of the board. And if this board decides that you want to dedicate funding towards development of a fisheries program in the Department of Water Resources, then we'll do it. I think a better use of the funds would be to get projects engineered and get plans and specs put together and provide funding towards those types of efforts and utilize the state and the feds and our tribal partners in a fisheries program. That's my personal opinion, but we'll do whatever this board asks us to do.
Right, so that's why I asked that question, because there were so many asks in that proclamation. But ultimately, who's doing it? Who's the team? Who's in charge? Who's managing that? If we look back on another proclamation, the tree mortality proclamation, that's the work that I do. You know, it's, I spend all of my time working on those, advocating to the state, working with other counties, pushing all, working with our partners. It's very little on staff, because they don't have the capacity. And so if this is something, and we have the proclamation, but we don't have the plan to implement anything. And so I think that's what this is about, is putting together that program. How are we going to fund it? And who's going to manage it? Because that's where we are right now. We have a piece of paper that we've made a declaration on, but we don't have any way to put any of these things forward.
And Supervisor Piska, as, you know, we've started budget prep, and we're getting ready for next year. And if the direction to staff is participate more in these intergovernmental discussions, participate, have a seat at the table, engage more, develop some plans for the future, we can certainly put that in as an ask. It won't be $1 million, I'll tell you that, it won't be that much. But we'll put some numbers to additional staff time to do those meetings and participate in that and put those plans and specs together. We can certainly do that. And that would be something that you can look at and admin can look at and as part of our preliminary budget.
Supervisor Spatier.
So I appreciate you bringing this to us. This was a request to kind of make sure that our expectations were the appropriate expectations and that you knew what those expectations were as well. So I think this is a good conversation to make sure that we're not all on a different page and that we understand one another. As you know, I work closely with you guys on Middle Creek. A lot of work goes into it for a very slow amount of stuff getting accomplished, because working with the state is just a very slow task. I think that Fish and Wildlife needs fire under their feet to make this happen. They've known since 2014, 2015 that this has been listed, and yet, we keep getting denied for grants that we attempt to get for projects that directly or indirectly would provide some benefit to the hitch. But it doesn't make any sense. So I know that you and I spoke earlier this morning. To me, my biggest ask is, we were told that you had a place at the table, and I think we need to make sure that you have a place at the table. There's this government-to-government conversation between tribes and the state. I want to make sure that we're involved in that, because what can we do to make sure the conversation keeps moving? What can we do to ensure Fish and Wildlife is held accountable for what they should be doing? Things like that. And what kind of partnerships can we create? Because there's work that's listed on the other projects and programs that maybe we can benefit by enhancing those, and it helps out the hitch. And Middle Creek's one, again, that stands out. If Middle Creek can be done today, that would be a huge benefit overall to the hitch. Another part of this that I just, I don't know how to implement it, but we oftentimes want to take that responsibility of the lake and the creeks, but I don't see Yolo ever really being involved. And we need to figure out how to get them involved. And I don't know if that needs to be on us to have those discussions, which we can, or if that's on Water Resources. But I think that's part of the conversation as well, because they have a responsibility. And I've seen them shrug that responsibility too often in the past. I think we're lucky. We have a lot of water right now going in our creeks. Sometimes a little too much, if it could come a little bit at a time, rather than a whole lot at once. But I think that this year gives us a little bit of ability to figure out how we're going to attack this in a way that's not going to push aside everything else we've been working on for so long. I mean, to anticipate for some action to be taken by April, figuring out where the funding's coming from, even if there is a grant available, we're lucky if we get that money by September, October. So I think being part of the general conversation that is occurring, and if we don't have a seat, then please come back so we can request a seat from the Board of Supervisors. I want to make sure that you are given that voice in that situation. But I think Yolo County Flood Control and just being a part of that is the two big things that I would like for us to be involved in. Because I don't know how else it is that we can truly be involved, other than just being the squeaky wheel.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, just wanted to clarify. Earlier, I spoke about the rural set-aside. I was referring to projects you showed and how getting some of that, you know, implemented or even funded some way, shape, or form. And also, I think you had mentioned, too, getting them shovel-ready. So that's what my comment was about. It was mainly to get the department in a position to have the capability to do some of the other stuff, rather than kind of them all sitting in these, you know, like a task list that's like 70% done, 60% done. We can get you to the finish line, so some of that can move forward. So that's what I was referring to earlier. And I think this, the fishery, I think with the partnerships with tribes would be very helpful as well. And, you know, I think this is a good presentation, and I think it coincides with what we talked about during the proclamation. I definitely don't want it to be burdensome, but I, you know, I'm willing to do what I can, especially in the Blue Ribbon Committee, to, you know, help with whatever I can, so. And the Yolo 2x2, I think we should just set one up, yeah.
So how much, to start attending all the meetings, how is that going to impact staff at current levels?
So that's a good question. We have been actively engaged, you know, for a while now. We've been participating in the conservation strategy since it started, when I started with the county in 2019. So we do have those times tracked. We can get a rough idea going into our staff time. They make great comments in our time tracking, so we know which meetings they're attending, so we can get a rough estimate. A lot of that, you know, we eat the costs of that. It's important for us to be at the table, so we make sure that our staff is at the table, so we can definitely bring some rough numbers of how much time usually spends, is spent on behalf of our staff to participate in this different hitch dialogue.
Supervisor Green.
Yeah, I think it's important we have a seat at the table. But it's also, we want whoever's sitting at the table to be empowered, not to just sit there and absorb technical information, but feel empowered to share things that we want. And so I guess, do we want one seat at the table? Do we want two? Do we want science? And do we want policy there? And I don't know what the current composition of the task force is. Seems to be kind of scientific, but there's probably some policy questions being asked on there now. And to Supervisor Spatier's point about CDFW needing a fire, yeah, probably. It's a dense beast. But back to the issue of a fishery program. So I realize it's a heavy lift, and yet, what a great opportunity we've been given. We actually have hitch running in the streams. We're not out of the woods. We could have a drought later this spring. We could have three years of drought, you know, at the end of this year. And despite talking about this for months now, neither state nor federal and the local agency really has capacity to do something this year on an emergency basis that could have substantial impact on turning the fortunes of this fish around. And even if we can't boot up a fisheries program on short notice, can we even do something like shelter in place, you know? Rather than just scooping them up and tossing them back in the lake and hoping for their best? Are there certain impoundments on the streams we can look at? Are they actually running in some of our reservoirs? You know, I just saw that there's a bass fishing tournament scheduled at Highland Springs. I don't know if there's any hitch in Highland Springs. So I'm just thinking out loud here. So for budgeting purposes, I think a fisheries program is still a great idea. And by the, thank you, Director DeLeon. You know, I want to give credit where credit is due. It's a great idea. I mean, we can budget a cost share. We probably don't have capacity to be lead agency, but we could certainly be supportive of an effort, whether it's led by CDFW, whether it could be led, in fact, by our native sovereign nations locally. They may be more nimble than even the state can be at this point. They may have funding streams that they have ready access that we don't this year. So I know you're looking for direction. So I guess just for budgeting, I do like the idea of a fisheries program. Clearly, you don't have bandwidth to operate it fully or even a majority of it locally. But if we're going to ask the state to spring one up, I imagine a cost share will come into the discussion, if only because their funding is going to be limited and that same task force that does have tribal representation. Maybe we can talk about some cost shares with them too. So to the specific issue of a fisheries program, I guess we can just, there's consensus here that, yeah, we clearly don't expect, given the limited capacity described here today, that you would take this on all by yourselves. That said, still think it's a good idea That said, still think it's a good idea if we can provide some type of support, whether it's just being at all the meetings and trying to advocate for the idea of a fishery. If it comes down to numbers and you want to come back and discuss cost share, maybe that would be something we could do. So I guess I can just thank you. Again, if there was misunderstanding, didn't want to ever communicate that we anticipated this to fall solely on you, if only because I didn't explain my understanding that I do hold the state as having primary authority and the primary ability to act expeditiously as the state should this year on developing fishery capacity for the hitch.
So I think we're not quite in a position to develop a full program, but what if there was a position added that could act as a liaison, could advocate to the state agencies, and could start looking at the programs and looking at grants as a first step? Because, you know, this is, we've seen this time and again. We can't accomplish much in just a handful of minutes and hours here and there. But as we have a climate officer now, if we have a dedicated staff person as a first step in developing this out, I think we could handle that probably. I don't know. We'll have to talk to Stephen. But that's something that I am willing to look at, and we could look at a budget item for that, what that position looks like, but really have that be an advocate, liaison, project development, grant writing, all of those things. I'm sure one person can handle it.
Part-time.
Part-time, yeah. Extra help. But that's something that I am willing to look at. I just, I know your pen's up, so you can take the next comment. Go ahead.
So my comment on that is, I think being part of that larger committee can tell us what are the next steps that can make immediate impact. And maybe this is not the next step that can make immediate impact, because there was constant, I guess, contradictions of what would be the best approach to deal with the hitch. Do we ask these people to change their behavior? Do we ask to take out some of the silt and allow for the water to flow better? I mean, there was lots of different options and topics that were brought up. I think we have to figure out what are the top three things, or what's the top thing, before we start spending any kind of money on something that may not be the number-one thing for us to look at. So I would suggest we make sure we sit down in that committee in the capacity to bring information, share information, and voice our opinion and direction of how we feel it should go. But I think that the collaborative can provide better guidance than a single conversation here. One of the things that I was thinking about, and I get it that UC Davis is definitely involved within the Blue Ribbon Committee, but I also know Humboldt State is a fish biology kind of university, I guess, sorry. Cal Poly Humboldt, or whatever they're called these days, sorry. They just changed. But are there any state university fisheries projects? Because they're heavily involved with fish biology. Are they involved to the point that Fish and Wildlife is involved? Do they have a collaborative agreement between themselves and Fish and Wildlife? I'd love to know what else we can bring in. Because while UC Davis does bring a large scientific community with them, I know that Humboldt is very specific about fish biology. So I'd love to see if we can bring in where they can do their research, and they could also help us out with getting something accomplished that we're looking to get accomplished. And I also feel that that committee, once they recognize the number-one thing we need to get accomplished, as a collaborative, the state is always looking for collaborative work whenever we're submitting grant applications. So rather than submitting grants on the behalf of County of Lake, we may be able to submit grants on the behalf of this collaborative that includes tribal government, that includes Fish and Wildlife, and so on and so forth, to ensure that this is what we've all agreed that needs to happen. So that, to me, is the steps that need to be taken to ensure we don't just try to offer a solution. It's the solution that everyone agrees on rather than not.
But I do, I mean, there's an incredible amount of asks that you just laid out, and I think they're, you know, worthy, that we need to work in that direction. But we can't ask staff to put that on top of their duties, and that's why I think maybe adding a position where we have one point of contact might be the best approach.
Would you like to see that in our preliminary budget?
I would, but I need consensus.
Well, it sounds like you said you were already going to those meetings, because I thought in our conversation that they were saying, yes, we'll offer you a position. So were you just joining the meeting as kind of a public member, but you're from Lake County? Or were you an actual member in that meeting?
So I'm not quite sure how the actual membership works. We were invited from CDFW, Felipe, who has been to the board regarding updates of the hitch. They did invite us to have dialogue, and we have given updates on behalf of the Water Resources Department. So we have had discussions with those, with the task force that is developed by CDFW and the tribal entities. And then we also participate in the conservation strategy, which is being led by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife.
And just to finish on my comment, I feel like my asks are asks to the committee, not asks to you specifically. Because again, reaching out to Humboldt State, what are you asking them? Well, I think that committee that you would go to would ask them. If it requires, I, my personal opinion is, I love services to our community more so than putting in new positions to just sit down in a meeting. But if that is what you feel is necessary in order to fulfill what we're asking you and setting our expectations, then obviously, we shouldn't be asking for something you can't commit to. And so if it needs to come back as a budget item and this has been implemented, then I would say yes. But at this moment, my only ask is, be part of the committee, be part of the conversation. The committee can write the grant, not you. I mean, we have the state at the table. They need to be helping us as much as possible. I hope that helps.
Just to clarify, so a seat at the table, we could have multiple seats. So if I understand right, and I could be wrong, but last time I spoke with Felipe, it's like, you got the seat. My question was, do you ever want to hear from policy people? Because again, we don't want to put anyone else in an awkward position, saying, I represent the county on this, that, and the other, unless we've met here and given you clear direction. Like, if we gave clear direction today, hit the next meeting, say, you know what? We talked about a fisheries program. We can't do it all by ourselves, but our board said there's intense interest in it. What do you guys think? You want to start brainstorming this stuff? But again, it's a CDFW-led committee. They don't have to listen to what we say. So I guess, I guess what input, when we do go to the next meeting, would be, you know, are they limiting it just to technical work, and they don't want to hear about policy things, like, hey, we really want to get started on a fisheries program. What do you think? Or are they open to having either a staff person like Chair Pyska suggesting, or even a policy person like a board member sit in from time to time, just to do the occasional "fire lighting," as Bruno put. So I was a little unclear on the latest composition of the committee. If it's all technical all the time and no policy work is being done, great. But I don't know that we need to go to each and every one of those meetings, because nothing is going to get done until we see that clearly hitch strategy someday. But if they're open to the idea that, again, we still have an emergency, what can we get done this year? And even if they've scratched their heads for the last three months, if we can get them to finally commit to a single plan of action, and to Supervisor Sabatier's point, maybe they all agree. Fishery, great idea. It's certainly popular here in our community. You know, one thing, one reason I want to pursue it is just because it's one thing everyone seems to agree on, you know? And so we want to build on that unity. We want to build on that collaboration and get things going to the extent we can. Whereas there may not be universal buy-in on some of the things, you know, going on with the water boards and stuff like that. So I guess I need a better understanding of what the committee is actually doing. Are they focused solely on technical work? Are they open to doing some policy initiatives so that we can, again, still an emergency? Yes, it's raining, but if there's anything we can do this year, this spring, this summer, to possibly scrape some fish populations into places of shelter or safety, or just DNA preservation, whatever it is. Fish are running in the stream right now. What can we do to take advantage of that blessing and take, you know, leverage it to our advantage, as opposed to just watching it, doing some rescues, and just doing what we've done for the last five, six years as this population has tanked?
And I will just like to add that, on that note, I'm more than happy to reach out to my contact Felipe to get some input from him. I definitely don't want to overstep, you know, and I want to stay in my lane, and I can't speak on behalf of that committee since I was invited to discuss. But I'm more than happy to start that dialogue with my contact coordinating that committee and get some input from them. And if they would like to come to the board to provide clarification or any input, more than happy to have our department sponsor such item as we've done with similar items in the past.
That actually might not be a bad idea. When we get back, we'll make contact with them and, you know, perhaps, it might not be a bad idea to bring them here so that they can hear this. You know, they can hear what this board's interest is, and we'll work on that. And if it looks like a good idea to bring them back, we will. And if it's something that we can put together for our preliminary budget, we'll do that as well.
Is your pen up again? Okay.
My comment was, I think that Water Resources, whether it's an extra body or the bodies you currently have in your department, is capable of representing the Board of Supervisors in both technical and policy, in the sense that you know this topic more than any of us. You have an intimate knowledge of this topic. Maybe not specifically hitch, but at least Water Resources and things directly involved with it. And that no Board of Supervisor is going to be able to make statements of, this is what we're going to do, and neither are you. If there are policy ideas that come out of the conversation, then at that point, you either bring it back to us, or you work with a couple of Board of Supervisors in order to polish it up and then bring it to us eventually. That's your choice. But I have faith that that's what you're there to do, and you're not just there to have a warm body and a seat, that you're paying attention to the conversation and trying to figure out how best for us to position ourselves to benefit and to collaborate best with them. I just, I feel like adding a political position in this type of committee, in my opinion, is not a, it's not a good ask for them, as they're supposed to be apolitical in those type of situations.
Yeah. You're our subject matter experts.
And the only, the only thing I would add to that is, every now and again, they do have to come back. And so we were accidentally there at the summit. We were kind of a last-minute addition, and yet, that meeting was so seminal in that it was the genesis. It was the seed of the idea for the Emergency Proclamation. So it can't be all, can't be all technical all the time. There is a time and place for the policy people to get involved, so. But I hear what you're saying. And I very much like Chair Pyska's idea of the budget unit. There is going to need to be staff support, whatever we're doing, whether it's for the fishery, other stuff. So if we can get consensus for that today, I'd love to see that.
Okay. Got it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, wait a minute. We did not open it up to the public. Joan?
She waited this whole time. I've been looking at the hitch today, yesterday, the day before. Dave Lowry told me that the state board was here looking at the hitch, that tribal people were rescuing hitch that were caught in puddles and canals and releasing them. I think that a lot of it is already happening, and I believe that the tribes and you have some policies set in place that we're all going to work together. And I feel a lot of sympathy for these fish. They're a lot bigger than they were when I saw them the last time. They haven't had any water to swim upstream. It's like a lot of us that are caught in the snow, in the rain. What do we do now? And some of them actually make it through the culverts and rest on the other side. I think we need to analyze the water that the fish have been living in. We need to find out who put what in the water that keeps the babies from growing. I think it needs to be collaborative with the USGS and everyone else. But I applaud your enthusiasm, and we need to get together to do something. And I will never forget these fish swimming around, like, talking to each other, what do we do now? Because things aren't the same they were, as they were years ago when they first came into being. We've done a lot to mess up the water and to obstruct the normal flow of hitch. We need to try to correct that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? Anyone in Zoom?
Betsy did have her hand up, but she put it down.
Okay. All right. Then I'll close public input. If there's nothing further, then thank you so much for coming today, and thanks for following up with this. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Calendars. It's our last item for open session. Are you ready, Michael? Supervisor Green?
I think I have first five commissioned tomorrow. Looks like Blue Ribbon Committee is on Thursday. I know I'm alternate, you're planning to go to that. I'll probably still tune in. It's a longer session, so you know it starts at 11 this time, right? Friday, I'll be meeting with City Manager Ingram. Bumped that from last week. And that's about it right now.
Who wants to go over here?
So just to, I kind of explained already that how I testified in front of the Senate Finance Committee in Sacramento with collaboration with RCRC Policy Advisors about infrastructure and how to bridge the gap with rural communities. And was the third group of folks that provided testimonials. The first was basically, you know, grant managers or program managers. Second was public works directors and other directors that worked with infrastructure, and then elected officials or agencies. And so the statements that were already made was a lot of what Director DeLeon, Administrator Harder, and Director Ewing had given to me to prepare for that. So I just said, me, too. But we do have, because it asked a question of, what have you done as a county to prepare for emergencies? Which I highlighted the Risk Reduction Authority, and I stated that that's something that was put together 2018, late 2018 or so. And we've been doing it for years, for a few years now. It's making progress. However, it is, it needs to be funded by grants as well. And so letting them know that we struggle with the triage of what we apply for, not to mention the issue when we apply for funding, at one time or another, when we receive it, there's a specific amount. Once we have to either pivot to take care of an emergency, or the department has something else that takes priority on their list, that funding at the time of needing to be used is outdated and not, you don't have the funding anymore, so you have to figure out other ways to pay for it. So letting them know that, you know, when I was previously a tribal chair, we enjoyed tribal set-asides, where that was strictly for the tribe to apply for, and that they commonly would compete with one another, but when the small tribes basically got the funding, or if another tribe got it, they wouldn't be too upset unless it was a big tribe that has the resources. And I said, the same situation is with rural counties and urban counties. So you should conduct a rural set-aside. And they mentioned that there's something called REEP. I don't know the acronym. It's 5% of the full grant, grunt. I'm thinking of the military, I guess. But of the full grant, and what happens is, rural cities and tribes have to compete for that 5%. And I said, that's not ideal. You're like basically throwing a piece of pizza on the table and expecting your children or siblings to fight for it, and now you're fighting. Now whoever gets it, the other two are mad. So we really need to concentrate on one per group so they can have their own set-aside. Like I said, Chair Caballeros was really, she asked me if I had a list or set-asides that I had in mind. I said I would put them together. And she asked for continue, continuing working, collaboration on that. So talk with RCRC, they're going to work with us on that. And going to talk to directors about getting those lists in place so I can keep following up with that, to ensure we can plug something in, to ensure we get some of these infrastructure funding sources in Lake County. And so that was that. Appreciated doing that. Pretty much everyone there except for Carter Jessup, who's commonly doing the actual presentations and public hearings, was there and giving them a brief. The tribal residents from the Elam Indian Colony were there as well to give their aspect, their insight as to how they grew up next to it, what the traditional values of the land are, things of that nature. And so it was a really informational meeting that day. I was going to ask them to, well, I did ask them to come to Middle Creek and the restoration of Bloody Island and Blue Lakes even to show them Scott Valley, how it floods as well. However, they had to get over to Santa Rosa and they had a meeting with the tribes at Big Valley as well. So I did ask Martha to come back so she can come and see those things. So that and Friday, I did the advisory committee with the Farm Ranch and Rural Communities, had our first ad hoc meeting and discussed our policy direction for the Water, Energy, and Climate Nexus to be presented either in June or July. And we're determining at the next meeting if it's going to be presented there end of year or end of our term limit, which is at end of '25. So it was basically an introducional meeting and we're looking at who's going to facilitate the meeting and whatnot. So that was last week is just following up because I gave the report that I'd be doing those things. Thursday, we have the Blue Ribbon Committee meeting. Basically be meeting with different directors either Wednesday or Friday to get those follow-up lists of possible infrastructure projects or funding we can look at Monday, meeting with the CAO. And back here Tuesday, the Board of Supervisors meeting.
So a quick recap of last week. Part of the important conversation of LAFCO, other than looking at our preliminary budget for next year, which by the way, there will be an increased ask for the cities and the county. I believe it's a 10% increase that will be requested. Part of the major conversation we were having is something that Supervisor Simon, who's part of LAFCO, stated that this is a similar discussion that's being taken up at the RRA, at the Risk Reduction Authority, which is water flows. And LAFCO's perspective is how do we try to enforce and ensure water flows from an enforcement side, which LAFCO really lacks enforcement abilities. But that's something we were discussing and hopefully coming back to see how it is that we can help out to ensure those things are occurring because we do municipal service reviews of every single one of the water districts or the fire districts, not every single water district, but the public ones. And how can we help in that fight to ensure that water flows for fire hydrants and such are always available in all communities? Then had our ban on vehicle abatement. We're going to do our two-year audit. Everything's looking really good. Both the city and the county are pulling huge amounts of vehicles. And it's somewhere along in the lines of, I don't know, we're in the 300 range, I think, between the county and the city, or maybe that was just one of them and it's 600 total. But the amount of vehicles that have been towed using AVA is pretty massive. I'd appreciate that we don't have to have that blighting our communities. However, we are not getting reimbursed anywhere close to what we're spending to clean up all of these vehicles. The amount of money that we receive on a quarterly basis is approximately $19,000 to $20,000, and we're probably spending anywhere between $60,000 and $80,000 per quarter in order to get these vehicles not only towed and taken off our streets, but also eventually dismantled and disposed of appropriately. So we're looking at drafting a letter to ask the state to review their process of how they collect AVA and maybe looking at a different formula or looking at communities that aren't spending their AVA because they don't have the same level of problems as we do and maybe being able to share those resources. So anyways, that was that. I'll move on to yesterday because of, I was about to say March Madness, but that's not correct, March for Wheels because of the Meals on Wheels. I spent most of my day yesterday at the Senior Center in Clear Lake Highlands, making food for the lunch, helping out with the deliveries, and then preparing frozen dinners for future deliveries to be made to individual folks driving around. I'm so glad that that service is available to the people that they deliver to. It's on a first-name basis. They know the schedule. It is another way to ensure there is a connection to the community. Already knew all that. However, seeing it in person was a different aspect that I had not been able to see quite yet. I am planning to see if I could do that quarterly to help out, just to ensure that I'm aware of what's going on, any issues that are occurring, so I have a better connection with our local senior center, especially since I'm not on the AAA. That way, that'll get me some of that information in a direct way. Then moving on to Wednesday, there's a Technology Governance meeting that I'll be taking part of. I'll go ahead and join as the alternate to listen in to the first five. Lake Fire Protection Meeting that I like to attend is having one. Hopefully, I'll have the chance to also join the School Board Meeting, again, just to keep track of what's going on in our community. Actually, just a quick announcement. Supervisor Simon and myself, amongst other folks, took part in a meeting with Knott County Unified School District. And it was suggested by Supervisor Simon, and we gave a whole bunch of different ideas to look at calling the new middle school Obsidian Middle School. That was one that was definitely liked by the majority of the group. We gave probably three or four, maybe five different ideas. Eventually, the board two weeks ago reviewed all those ideas and the official name of the middle school in Clear Lake will be Obsidian Middle School. To some people's discontent and some other people's content, just because it's a new name and people really wanted the old name, so hard to let go. But overall, happy that we're getting a middle school over there. I think it's a good stopgap between elementary school and high school and really happy about that. Then on Thursday, I have a Hope Rising Meeting. We have a board meeting in the morning. And then I will be doing a presentation with Blue Zones on a program that I hope eventually I will be bringing back to the Board of Supervisors. But gotten myself connected with Blue Zones to see if they like the idea that I have and we are running with it. And so we'll see where it goes. On Friday, I am meeting with a group that are offering an interesting idea for our community. Again, something I think I'll be bringing back to the board, so I won't mention too much today, but something climate change, resiliency related, and pretty excited about the conversation. I hope it's what I think it is. Then I will be meeting with our tax collector. I submitted to Patrick Sullivan the easy smart pay that CSAC has been advertising for so long. I'm glad that Patrick Sullivan has the keen eye and understanding of these things where he had new questions that I had never thought of. But we will be meeting with the group that offers easy smart pay to see if there's interest in moving forward and eventually coming back to the board. The idea is kind of like an escrow account for property taxes, so you don't have to pay two big whopping payments. You can pay on a monthly basis and eventually that spills over into the tax collector's office. And then I'll be going back again this Friday to visit the Warming Shelter. I went last Friday. They are, in my opinion, in a much better position than I have seen them. They have now, I believe they said it could be 13, but they mentioned 12 a couple of times, employees working there that have been hired. Even when I went to the door, it was the first time I was greeted with a security guard. And so they've definitely upped their game as far as the ability to, I think, render the services in a more appropriate fashion rather than trying to ask everyone to do a whole lot more than normal. And so everything seemed fine. The food looked good again. That's one of the only things that I think has definitely not been a problem. But now staff is much more calm and much more capable to go home and enjoy their time off rather than before where it was nonstop overtime. So that was good to see. And I'll be back again on Friday to check in. On Saturday, I will be attending the Senior Center fundraiser, their hoedown, their annual fundraiser, and I will be one of the auctioneers. So that should be fun. And then be back here on Monday. I am, what is this? This is a surprise. Oh, I'll be joining the Economic Mobility Leadership Network from NACO on Monday for our monthly meeting and meeting with our CAO and preparing for our Board of Supervisor Meeting on the 20th. That's all I got.
That's it?
Sorry. Sorry. I told it ring to tell me to stop.
So the biggest news that I have to share is that we were notified yesterday by NCO that they received word that the Home Hardening Funding has come through with a female award, which is incredible. They have been working on this diligently for, it's close to a year and a half ever since they were selected by CalOES and CalFire to work on this project. So that's great. They're going to, the funding came through, the funding notice came through yesterday. Today, they are opening up for their federal procurement for qualified contractors. They've got a list of pre-qualified homeowners and they have built out their team and they're ready to go and it's really, really exciting. Yes. Of course, you know, now the real work begins, but they have been working, so I really hesitate to even say that. Yesterday, at the Risk Reduction Authority, a couple of things came up. And I know that Frank Abely spoke with you about Elka Mountain Road, but that did come up as an issue. Hopefully, we can figure out how to get that safely resolved. The RCD is bringing a proposal to the April meeting for the Support Services. We've got one more month of the county working with that support. And so we're really grateful that the meeting was facilitated by our climate officers. That's great. And then we're going to be working on our strategic planning, hopefully before the end of the fiscal year. Tomorrow morning, if I agenda review, there's a Friends of Bog's meeting. Someone in my family will be attending that if I can't. And then Thursday, there's the Behavioral Health Community meeting, but I'm not sure I'll be able to go to that. I do, my third module for my NACO training started this week, so I'm getting caught up on all of that. Then I'll have my breakout session Thursday afternoon. And then Friday morning, I have our Treaty of Mortality Task Force Meeting, which is monthly. Then I've got my cohort meeting for my class. I had lunch with a constituent, but that may have canceled. And then Monday, I've got our meeting with CAO Parker, my meeting with CAO Parker, and then a Benefit Assessment Zone Meeting, which is at 11:00. So I'll just come in here and we'll do it in person and then I'll get to that meeting in the Congress, Congress Conference Room. And that's what I've got. Okay. So that, sure.
I got a notification last week from PG&E that they were going to open up Scott Dam. They're going to keep the gates open. They state indefinitely in deference to a seismic safety concern. What that means is usually they'll close it, but for whatever, because of this study that I know that I've requested, I know Supervisor Sabatier told me he would probably be requesting the same thing to see how it looked previous to this most recent study and how it looks now, to see, you know, what the difference is and what the level of danger it is in the structure. And so Congressman Thompson had written a letter and basically had stated he would like to request FERC evaluate this proposed plan as well as ensure that all impacted parties, includes those who rely on the water resources from Lake Pillsbury, have opportunity to comment. So although that was, you know, thrust it onto us Thursday, I was glad to see that Congressman Thompson put that letter out right away. We were supposed to do a trip out there, I want to say, in February. It got pushed back to this month and then obviously we couldn't go out there. I'm thinking in April, he's looking at doing something. I just talked to Brad today, but we'll see how that goes. He's going to throw out some dates to either go out to the Scott Dam with PG&E or get a better look at it. But either way, just wanted to highlight that as that's been an announcement.
So was there a new seismic study? Is that why you sent the letter?
Right. And so that's what we're asking. Okay, how does it compare to the initial seismic?
Good question.
Right, yeah. Well, you brought it up and I was pouting basically and he called me and said, I'd like to see. I was like, wait, yeah.
And because we spoke and you said you would ask for it, I'm waiting for you to get that, so I didn't ask.
Okay, okay. Well, haven't got anything back from them, but I'll press again.
Let me know and I'll do the same.
Okay. All right, well, that's it for our open session items. We will not be having 8.2 or 8.3 as we don't have a full board for staff evaluations.
Madam Chair, 8.1 is also unnecessary today.
Okay. So we'll just do 8.4. Public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1. Interview for Behavioral Health Director, Appointment of Behavioral Health Director. And that is it for closed session. Thank you so much.